You know, with the packed house, if you don't mind squeezing in, I feel like a Disneyland person, squeezing into the middle of the road to let some folks sit down, that would be fantastic, if you don't mind, thank you. And then those of you standing in the back, there are a few seats that you can come and sit in. And we do have some overflow seating in the room next door, we'll have the meeting on in that room as well.
Okay, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for July 9th, 2024, if you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I, God, we pray that the meeting would be in the best interest of everyone involved. We pray that you would give us the courage to speak if we have reason. The decisions we make can have monumental impact, so we ask for your wisdom. Open our minds to the ideas of others and open our ears to hear their words. Help us make fair assessments of what they say and help us to treat everyone who is present with dignity and respect. We want to be godly in our actions with one another, being slow to speak and quick to listen, and valuing the opinion of others. So with regards to this, we pray for your help and love, amen. Okay, roll call please, Mr. Scully.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sennella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, moving on to consent calendar, do we?
Excuse me, Mayor, I have a suggestion. Could we move the new business item to after consent?
Oh yes, sure, I was planning on that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, okay, so the consent calendar, do any council members have any items they wish to pull?
Move to approved, tonight's consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any noes? Seeing none. Okay, on to oral communications. Uh, do we have any speaker slips?
No, new business. I moved the new business to after consent.
To before, so after consent, okay, sorry, we are, I'm sorry, my apologies, I misunderstood you. Okay, actually, we are going to take then, uh, new business first, so we will move on to item number seven.
Thank you.
Is that you, Michelle?
Yes, that is me, I have a brief presentation on item number seven. It's related to adopting full-time compensation schedule and executive compensation. As a requirement to address executive compensation as a new business item, this item is being presented as new business today. As discussed in the staff report, the city has experienced significant challenges related to attracting and retaining experienced engineering professionals to fill longstanding vacancies in this field. Staff has completed a compensation analysis for several critical positions and have identified that the adjustment of compensation is necessary to enhance competitiveness and appeal in the market. To improve our market position to best support significant development growth the city is experiencing now and into the near future, we're adding a market rate adjustment step to expand the maximum salary ranges, which will provide additional flexibility in both attracting and retaining employees. Additionally, we're proposing to add back the city engineer classification to the compensation schedule, creating the ability for succession planning and restructuring as a future endeavor if ever needed. The following compensation ranges related to executive positions are impacted due to the proposed market adjustments and are as follows. Grade four E, which includes the city engineer classification, expands the current top of the salary range from two hundred and nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars to two hundred and twenty-one, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Grade three E, which includes the deputy city engineer classification, and expands the current top salary of the range from a hundred and ninety-five, seven hundred, a hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred dollars to two hundred and thirteen and three hundred and thirteen dollars. Grade two E, which includes the principal civil engineer classification, expands the current top of the salary range from a hundred and sixty-two thousand and sixty dollars to a hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. At this time, it's staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution in support of the updated compensation schedule.
Okay, so moved, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Seeing none? Okay, moving on to item number eight, Resolution 2024-9322, placing a general tax measure on the November 5th, 2024, general municipal election ballot to establish a one percent general transactions and use sales tax. Who's going to be doing this presentation this evening?
Uh, that will be me, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
So, um, all right, jumping in, tonight, I'm going to be providing you with a presentation that addresses the need for the city to place a one cent sales tax measure on the November ballot, as well as discussing with you how these dollars will be spent if we're successful. Addressing our community's needs, we want to ensure that first responders are prepared to provide quick responses to 911 emergencies, we want to continue to maintain the 204 miles of streets, 126 miles of storm drains, and nearly 300 acres of parks. We want to continue to fix and maintain underground storm drain pipes to avoid sinkholes or flooding. I think we all remember watching in horror as the large section of the 78 disappeared during the storms last year, and while we had a very minor version of this in San Marcos, it was certainly a reminder that some parts of town, what lies beneath is, has been in place for over 50 years, so we need to continue to invest in our infrastructure. This slide is, is a good news slide, while it does say that population is outpacing resources, it speaks to the fact that San Marcos has thoughtfully developed over the last decade, and we've added about 5,000 residents. During that same time period, our deputies and fire personnel have remained relatively flat, and yet, we were just named the 12th safest city in California, one. However, this isn't sustainable as we continue to move forward and grow. We recently did a standards of coverage study to update the standards of coverage study that took place in 2017. In 2017, the study clearly stated that the city was in need of a fifth fire station. The updated study clearly stated that really, the city is in need of a fifth fire station as well as a sixth ambulance. Through clever timing and focus on revenue, we were able to put the sixth ambulance into play during peak hours at zero impact to the budget. However, we do need to focus on finding a spot for the fifth fire station and getting that built. All right, San Marcos, as our mayor likes to say, by 2026, San Marcos will be home to 44 parks spanning almost 300 acres. I believe it's what makes us a thriving community that we are today, we people love to live, work, and play. The parks and trail systems in San Marcos is also part of what created us, rated us as Fortune's Top 20 cities in California. However, parks take maintenance dollars and they're, they're expensive to maintain in the condition that we keep our beautiful parks in. In order to develop, deliver a balanced budget in recent years, the city has struggled to fund its annual pavement maintenance project adequately. Pavement condition surveys are performed in the field to assess the severity and extent of pavement distress citywide, resulting in a standardized pavements, pavement condition index, or PCI, scaled from zero to 100. As few as 10 years ago, San Marcos boasted a PCI of 80, indicating that the city's roads were in very good condition. Inadequate funding for pavement maintenance has caused the PCI to deteriorate to today's value of 71, representing a good to acceptable condition. When the PCI reaches this level in the low 70s, an accelerated decline in roadway surfaces is expected, as preservation treatments such as slurries, chip seals, and the like cease to be sufficient to slow or reverse cracking. Instead, structural overlays, milling, and varying depths of replacement are then required to return the roadways to a good pavement condition, drastically increasing necessary And this slide is arguably the reason we're having this conversation this evening. The city receives the lowest property tax in the region. When Prop 13 came into being in 1978, San Marcos was a far more rural community than the San Marcos of today. The property tax apportionment for city services was at the time determined to be minimal, at only 6.6 cents of the property tax dollar. That means that for every $1 million house built in San Marcos, the city receives $660 annually. Knowing that this would be a challenge, prior city managers created additional revenue streams in the form of community facility districts, a robust real estate portfolio, and the utilization of redevelopment dollars. In 2012, the state dissolved the redevelopment agency, removing one of the very important tools in our toolbox. If San Marcos was arguably any other bar in this chart, we wouldn't be here this evening. The sales tax rate currently applied to San Marcos is 7.75%. This includes a combined statewide amount of 7.25%, a San Diego County district tax of 0.5% for the Transnet program. Of the total 7.75% collected, the city receives 1%. Pursuant to California tax code, the combined tax rate in any county cannot exceed 2%. Transnet has 0.5% of this 2% already allocated, leaving only 1.5% available to the city or any other countywide initiatives. We would like to maintain local control and keep San Marcos sales tax dollars spent in San Marcos. This slide lists the current sales tax rates in the county. Chula Vista, Del Mar, El Cajon, Imperial Beach, La Mesa, National City, Oceanside, Solana Beach, and Vista all have existing sales tax measures, with Encinitas, Escondido, Lemon Grove, and Santee considering a measure in the November election. Locally controlled funding for city services. If successful, the $20 million generated by the one cent sales tax would be utilized to fund improvements to roads, intersections, bike lanes, and signals to improve safety and reduce congestion, maintain and enhance quick response times for 911 emergencies, clean and maintain local parks, trails, sports fields, playgrounds, and community facilities, fix and maintain, fix potholes and maintain city streets, provide fire protection and paramedic services, keep trash and pollution out of local lakes, creeks, and waterways. How will we ensure fiscal accountability and local control? We will be establishing an independent citizens oversight committee that will be providing annual audits. We are going to ensure that the funds will remain local and cannot be taken by the state. Certain purchases will also be exempt from the tax. Groceries, prescriptions, and necessities of life are exempt from this additional tax. A recent estimated study proved that 40% of the current sales tax generated in San Marcos is paid by tourists and visitors to San Marcos. However, if we're able to implement this tax, 100% of the revenue will be kept in San Marcos and spent on San Marcos projects and services. Currently, the measure has been endorsed by the DSA, the San Marcos Firefighters Association, the Boys and Girls Club, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and a number of individuals and citizens throughout San Marcos. We're hopeful that we're going to be adding to this endorsement list should the vote tonight be the decision to place this on the ballot. Thank you, any questions from the council?
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions of council, we have several speakers, so we might want to get to those, if you want to hold off, okay. All right, all right, first up is going to be, whoops, Jordan Abiel, followed by Rod Jones, and then after Rod Jones, we'll have Eric Bruvold. Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Jordan Abiel, president of the San Marcos Professional Firefighters Association. I'm joined tonight by members of our local, as well as members of many locals around us who are impacted or who are here in support. You know, as well as I do, the public safety needs that are currently facing our city. I'm not going to rehash some of the statistics from the presentation, but it's safe to say that it's been too long since we last added a fire station. We're all very proud of the city we work for and pleased to see the, the smart growth that's going on and the nice buildings going up, but my members are impacted and realize that with that growth in population comes an increased demand for service. And being that it, 2008 was the last time a fire station was added, since that time, our call volume has nearly doubled, our population has, has skyrocketed, and we've had an increase in complexity and type of buildings that are being constructed in the city. So now we're going from mid-rise into high-rise territory, and with that is additional challenges for our members. So, um, we realize that while this fifth fire station is a high priority and it's, it's needed, we have, we know that the funding is not presently there to make it happen. It's been needed for years now, but we believe the time has come and we can't wait any longer. It's not safe to ask our members to continue to do more with less, and the citizens of San Marcos deserve to continue receiving the high level of service that they are accustomed to. So for those reasons, we stand here before you with a very positive message of support. We thank you for your leadership, leading into this point, from city staff and from our elected officials. We hope that you will hear from those who are present tonight, and we ask that you would allow the citizens of San Marcos to voice their opinion this November, and that's what you're doing by placing this on the ballot. Let, let our residents determine what level of service, what level of quality of life, and what level of protection and public safety that they desire. So, we thank you, we're here in support, and we would urge you and ask you to vote yes and place the sales tax measure on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Up next, next is Rod Jones, followed by Eric Bruvold, and then after Eric, we will have Rick Rengaitis. Welcome.
Mayor Jones and members of the council, members of staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rod Jones. I've been a resident of San Marcos for close to 25 years. During that period of time, I have been involved in a number of organizations in the community, and some of the things that I've done while during that time is I've served on the Planning Commission, I've served as co-chair of the General Plan Advisory Council, not the most recent one, but the one before that. I was a member of the Palomar College Prop M Citizens Oversight Committee. I served on the Oversight Board to the successor agency to the former San Marcos Redevelopment Agency. I've been a member of Cal State University Advisory Council. I served as chairman of the Board of the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce several years back, and I am currently president of the San Marcos Rotary Club. I hope you can remember all that. I'm here tonight speaking on my own behalf and not representing Rotary, the Rotary Club or any organization. While I'm not a big fan of increased taxes, I've always appreciated the great job you all and city staff have done in managing the finances of our city. I appreciate all amenities and the services that we enjoy in our city, and I believe the current proposal for increasing our sales tax is essential to maintaining the quality of life we currently enjoy in San Marcos. Therefore, I'm asking you to vote for that increase and to work to help pass it. Thank.
Thank you, Rod. Next up is Eric Bruvold, followed by Rick Rengaitis, and then Arcela Nunez.
Members of the council, Eric Bruvold, and just fair disclosure, I'm not here on behalf of San Diego North EDC tonight, I'm just a, yes, a reformed or recovering economist. And what I wanted to remind the council in your discussions is two really important facts, which I think add to what your city manager presented to you just a second ago, which is first, is that if we look on a per capita basis, since 2010 to 2022, your sales tax collection on a per capita basis has barely moved, only 1.7% increase over those entire 12 years. And remember, some of your key drivers, health, construction, energy, and CalPERS bills have all been increasing faster than CPI. So you've been in fact falling behind, even as you've added new residents, new people to the region, and higher income households, you still haven't been able to keep pace with the cost of doing business as a city. And then the second thing to think about is really moving forward. One of the challenges that all of North County has is that we're getting older. I see more gray in my beard these days than I did before. And the challenge with that is, is as we grow older, we tend to consume more on services which aren't subject to sales tax, like healthcare, like education for our kids, like vacations, and we spend less money on those goods that are subject, like cars. Maybe before, we would buy a new car every four or five years, and now we buy one every seven or eight. We fill up our houses less with Home Depot goods because we're moving less often, and we're in fact downsizing, not expanding. So as you have barely treaded water, and you're facing a growing population in San Marcos, you're going to be challenged. And while we're not going to endorse the measure today, what I am going to suggest is that you do need to think about ways in which revenue can be increased if you want to maintain the level of services that you need to as the city of San Marcos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Next up, Rick Rengaitis, followed by Arcela Nunez, followed by Aaron Harper.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, city staff, thanks for allowing me to make some comments regarding the 1% sales tax increase. My name is Rick Rengaitis, I'm the CEO of the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber's board of directors, I'm here to inform you that we support the city of San Marcos taking a 1% sales tax increase to the November ballot. The chamber is confident that the city has been fiscally responsible with regards to budget management and will continue to do so. We are conscious of the fact that as the city has seen significant growth over the past 10 years, there comes an increase in services and costs. The San Marcos business community continues to grow and benefit from a healthy and vibrant city. San Marcos Chamber and the members that we serve look to the city to continue its path of strategic growth and bolster a strong local economy while maintaining and enhancing the quality of life in our city. So because of that, the board of directors is asking for, for you to say yes, as a 1% sales tax increase to go to ballot. And also, I'd also like to add, on a personal note, I've been a resident of San Marcos for 12 years now, and I personally support the sales tax increase as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Arcela Nunez, followed by Aaron Harper, and then it will be, oh gosh, I have to get on my granny glasses, why don't you go ahead and I'll catch up on that.
Buenas tardes. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, staff, and neighbors. My name is Arcela Nunez, and I have lived in the city of San Marcos for more than 42 years. This is the city where I grew up, where I raised my family, and where I continue to live and work, many times working with low-income families that would continue to be impacted unless we're able to maintain the level of services that we currently have. We use our roads and city services on a daily basis like all of you. Over the years, we've enjoyed the beautiful parks, all the recreation services. My kids and my grandkids play on the playgrounds all across our city. They learn to swim at Woodland Park. My daughters played softball, my grandson has played baseball. We've used every amenity that the city offers. We've even celebrated many birthdays at different parks. We also have experienced tragedies and have needed emergency services. Family members became ill, and would it not have been for the amazing emergency responders who showed up to save lives, our family would have had very negative experiences. So thank you to all for all those services. In 2014, our family was also evacuated due to the fires here in San Marcos. I'm sure many of you remember that day and that week. Again, thanks to the emergency responders, the loss of life and property was minimized. In the neighborhood where I work, I look out the window and I see the children playing on the playground. I see the elders sitting in the shaded part of the park right across from my office on Autumn Drive. Some days, I hear the ambulance coming through to rescue many of my neighbors. Other days, I hear the sheriff, I see the patrols going around the
the quality of life in our city. So because of that, the Board of Directors is asking for you to say yes as a 1% sales tax increase to go to ballot. And also, I'd also like to add, on a personal note, I've been a resident of San Marcos for 12 years now, and I personally support the sales tax increase as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Arcela Nunez, followed by Erin Harper, and then it will be, oh, gosh, I have to get off my granny glasses. Why don't you go ahead, and I'll catch up on that.
Buenas tardes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, staff, and neighbors. My name is Arcela Nunez, and I have lived in the city of San Marcos for more than 42 years. This is the city where I grew up, where I raised my family, and where I continue to live and work, many times working with low-income families that would continue to be impacted unless we're able to maintain the level of services that we currently have. We use our roads and city services on a daily basis like all of you. Over the years, we've enjoyed the beautiful parks, all the recreation services. My kids and my grandkids play on the playgrounds all across our city. They learn to swim at Woodland Park. My daughters played softball. My grandson has played baseball. We've used every amenity that the city offers. We've even celebrated many birthdays at different parks. We also have experienced tragedies and have needed emergency services. Family members became ill, and would it not have been for the amazing emergency responders who showed up to save lives, our family would have had very negative experiences. So thank you to all for all those services. In 2014, our family was also evacuated due to the fires here in San Marcos. I'm sure many of you remember that day and that week. Again, thanks to the emergency responders, the loss of life and property was minimized. In the neighborhood where I work, I look out the window and I see the children playing on the playground. I see the elders sitting in the shaded part of the park right across from my office on Autumn Drive. Some days, I hear the ambulance coming through to rescue many of my neighbors. Other days, I hear the sheriff. I see the patrols going around the neighborhood. These are some of the essential services that I have come to appreciate, and I know all of my neighbors do as well. But we also need to improve lighting, we need sidewalks, and many other services. So please vote yes for a safe and strong city of San Marcos. Thank you.
Thank you, Arcela. Next up, Erin Harper, followed by Benjamin Nazarian and Lisa Stout.
Good evening. My name is Erin Harper, and I'm the owner of Ascend Coffee Roasters, and I've operated my business in San Marcos for many years. The cost of living here in San Diego is the highest it's ever been, and we've all felt the effects on our wallets. These costs affect family businesses and our local government through the paying of employee wages and costs of goods. For my business, it's our top priority to continue to source the highest quality coffee and food that we can and to maintain good wages for our employees. In order to do this, we have to raise prices from time to time. It's not fun for anyone, but that's the choice we make to maintain a high-quality experience. The San Marcos government is now in the same situation, either cut important funding or raise taxes. I believe they have put this off for as long as possible, since the rising costs we are experiencing is not new. I encourage the City Council today to vote in favor of keeping the standard of living high in San Marcos and to continue investing in the future of the city by adding the sales tax measure to our ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Next up, Benjamin Nazarian and Lisa Stout, followed by Lionel Salisbury.
Hi, I'm Corporal Ben Nazarian. I'm Secretary Treasurer for the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and I just want to quickly say, on behalf of the Deputy Sheriff's Association, we support putting this measure on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. The Stout, followed by Lionel Salisbury, then Jason Simmons.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members and staff. My name is Lisa Stout, and my husband and I have been proud residents of San Marcos for 20 years. As longtime residents, we've seen the city grow and change, and I'm here to strongly support the sales tax measure. First, this initiative is vital to our public safety. Some of our neighbors have already emphasized our police and fire departments work tirelessly to keep us safe, and this measure will help provide them with the resources they need to continue protecting our growing community effectively. Second, maintaining and improving our roads, parks, and public facilities is essential for the quality of life of our residents. These are the spaces where we gather, play, and connect, and their upkeep is crucial to our community's well-being and daily life. I understand that nobody loves taxes. However, we need to recognize that the sales tax measure is not just an expense, but an investment in our community's future. And I believe the sales tax measure is a necessary investment in order to maintain the quality of life we enjoy today and to foster a vibrant, thriving San Marcos for future generations. So I urge you to support this measure to ensure that San Marcos continues to be a place where we are all proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Lionel Salisbury, followed by Jason Simmons, then Daryl Roberts.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Lionel Salisbury. I am a resident in San Marcos. I'm also on the Planning Commission, and I work in San Marcos. I just want to say that I am for the measure, and I echo what everyone else is saying. It's an investment in our community. I love the growth. I appreciate the transparency since this measure came about, and you all have been very gracious of explaining every step of the way to the community. We really appreciate that, and I would just hope that we get a unanimous vote for this. Thank you.
Jason, next up will be Daryl Roberts, followed by Michael McDonald.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Jason Simmons. I've lived in San Marcos for 50 years now, several businesses in town. I'm on a lot of boards in town and dedicate a lot of my time to local nonprofits that make a big difference in San Marcos, and very proud of that work. But none of that work compares to what this will do in terms of transforming generationally for this town, having a real support system coming from the sales tax initiative. So I encourage you to put it on the ballot to make a long-term generational difference in our ability to, in my opinion, transform the community again. It's gone through, since I've been here, incredible transformation through the development, and now to support that development moving forward as well as support our kids and what we want to see happen. I'm really excited to have you, hopefully, vote to have this be put on the ballot, see what the people say. I'm going to support it all the way through to the end and let all my neighbors know that this is something that this town needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next up, Daryl Roberts, followed by Mike McDonald, and then Matt Simmons.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Daryl Roberts, and I'm the Vice President for the California Professional Firefighters. I have the distinct honor of representing nearly 5,000 firefighters in Southern California, including the counties of Orange County, San Bernardino, Riverside, and of course, here in San Diego. And specifically tonight, I rise in support of the measure. That's before you. San Marcos firefighters have been heroic in their actions over the last several decades, without a doubt. You guys have had the kind of fires that you see on the nightly news. And just today, we had dozens of firefighters from Southern California, including our own in the city of Chula Vista, San Diego. We work collaboratively through the mutual aid system. It doesn't matter if it's in Northern California, Central, or in Southern California, we are all going to show up and support. And what this allows is our San Marcos firefighters to take better care of your citizens, but if there's a community in need, San Marcos has the ability to be that help, to be that aid. It's pretty enlightening to see all the support that's here tonight, from business to Deputy Sheriff's Office. There's a few firefighters out here in the group also. And I know it's, you guys have a task of leading a city, but I could assure you that the California Professional Firefighters are 100% committed to ensure that San Marcos is taken care of, along with the men and women that do the work here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Daryl. Next up, Michael McDonald, followed by Matt Simmons, and then Steve Gilman. Michael McDonald? I know I saw him. Oh, there he is. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mike McDonald. I have been an active commercial developer in this city since 1999, and I'm here this evening to talk in favor of the sales tax initiative. When I look at San Marcos, it reminds me of a city in the middle of a donut. And the donut is the hills surrounding the urban area, covered with very flammable vegetation. I think we all remember the fire that we had coming from Del Diaz over the hills, threatening and requiring the evacuation of Cal State San Marcos. Fortunately, this city is lucky to have a very high quality of a fire department and other civic services. One of the things I wanted to mention is fire insurance costs. Whether you're a homeowner or you're a tenant, commercial or residential, everybody is impacted by the cost of fire insurance. The insurance companies pay very close attention to the quality of the fire department, time of response, personnel coverage, equipment. And again, fortunately, San Marcos has had a very high standard. So if you're looking at the increase in the sales tax versus not only the quality of services, but also an offset to further increases of insurance costs, it's clear that the sales tax initiative is very beneficial for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, Matt Simmons, followed by Steve Gilman, and then we have Paula Rusinski and Kathy Steele.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council, staff, and the community. Look at this room here. This is pretty amazing to see all these people come out and support San Marcos like this. My name is Matt Simmons. I'm actually a native San Markusian. I was born here in 1976. So far, I've only heard one speaker that's lived here longer than me. That was my brother, Jason. Business owner, resident, and have raised my three amazing, I'll call them kids, but now all adults here in this town, and hope to raise my grandkids here someday as well. I know how difficult this is for the council to be looking at things like this. I've obviously been here in front of the council before for projects and development reasons. A couple of things I wanted to mention is this city has over 30,000 homes in it, most of which were built prior to CFDs putting in place. I personally have lived in seven homes in this community with only one of them paying CFDs. That house was saved by many of these firefighters here tonight, back in 2014. Either they or their partner agencies slept on my lawn, stayed on our street, and made sure we were safe. And we need to ensure that that level of service continues in this community. It is difficult, knowing that Proposition 13 had the effects that it did on this community, and I understand where it was. I used to ride my horse down the streets. I used to play in the chicken coops. I know exactly what this town was like when we had very little infrastructure. I know exactly what it's like today when we have tons of infrastructure and people like Mr. Etamendi over here has to figure it all out and take care of it. I understand the challenges. I urge you all to take the pressure off of yourselves and put it on the community. Let us have the voice, let us take the vote, and let us support the community that has supported us our entire lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Steve Gilman, followed by Paula Rusinski and Kathy Steele, and then Dylan DeBick.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Gilman. I'm the International Association of Firefighters Tent District Vice President. That means I represent 53,000 firefighters in the states of Hawaii, California, Arizona, New Mexico, and the Mariana Islands. And I just want to point out that this is incredibly refreshing. We have staff, we have the community, as we see, and I'm not going to belabor this point because every speaker has stood up in support of this. But it is incredibly unusual to have the Chamber of Commerce, firefighters, the sheriffs, community groups, all on the same page, wanting to invest in their community. And that's what it is. It is an investment. It is their opportunity to choose whether or not they want the lifestyle that San Marcos has delivered over the decades to continue. And I urge you to place this measure on the ballot. And what I can guarantee you is that you will have the full support of what we call the three lanes of the IFF. The local lane, your San Marcos firefighters, many who live in this very community, the state and the California Professional firefighters, as well as the IFF, to invest in your community as well. We're not just concerned with our firefighters, which obviously we are, we're also concerned with your citizens, because again, many of our firefighters are citizens in this very city. So I urge you to support this, place it on the ballot, and let the citizens make that choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We have Paula and Kathy. I see you're here, and then Dylan, and then Kathy Bauer after that.
City Council, Mayor Jones, city staff, community members. My name is Paula Rusinski. As a member of the community and part of the San Marcos CERT team, I'd like to add my support for the sales tax increase of 1% to maintain emergency, fire, and safety services, improve traffic conditions, including light signals, continue to keep parks in the city clean, and to provide resources to people in all areas of the city. I also want to thank city staff for the explanations to various individuals and groups in English and in Spanish about what the tax increase would mean for the city of San Marcos. This informative literature survey and sharing the results and all the educational information has been important in letting citizens understand this initiative. Residents and visitors have always appreciated our city and thank so much to our local government, and we want to remain proud of it. Therefore, I'm here to advocate for the tax increase and urge you to please place it on the ballot for the November election. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council members and staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to encourage you all to vote yes on the 1% tax increase. As a CERT volunteer, I've had the opportunity to better understand the needs of the San Marcos Fire Department. As our population grew, the fire services did not keep up. We need another fire station, more paramedic and fire protection, and faster responses to 911 emergencies. In the recent survey by the city of San Marcos, 95% of respondents listed this as their number one issue. We recently spotted a large plume of smoke in our neighborhood. We called 911, expecting the San Marcos Fire Department to show up. Instead, firefighters came from Rancho Santa Fe to investigate. We are a little puzzled by that. I have been in the audience here several times and listened to the firefighters' plea for a tax increase so they can do their job. Mayor Jones, the San Marcos firefighters supported you in your 2022 reelection bid, and I believe it's only right and fair that you support them now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up, Dylan, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. My apologies, I know I said it wrong. It's either Dubite or DeBick. Anyway, followed by Kathy Bauer, and then Chris Lawrenson.
Story of my life. My name is Dylan DeBie.
It's not me, thank goodness.
It's not you. I've been, my name is Dylan DeBie, and for the past 16 years, I've proudly called San Marcos my home. As a devoted father of two children attending San Marcos schools, I have vested interest in this community's well-being. In my professional capacity as the Supervisor of the Traffic Signals and Street Lighting Division, I've had the privilege of witnessing the city's remarkable growth over the past 17 years. During my tenure, we've accomplished significant infrastructure improvements, including construction of more than 45 traffic signals, the installation of 20 miles of fiber optic communication cable. This extensive network now connects 90% of our traffic signals, enhancing safety, efficiency for all residents. Additionally, I serve as the President of the San Marcos Supervisor Association. Today, I stand before you to express my unwavering support for the proposed tax measure. As a resident, father, employee, association representative, I recognize the critical importance of maintaining and supporting a robust infrastructure. We've invested. We view this measure as an essential, not only for bolstering public safety, but also for providing long-term benefits to the city and balancing budget and ensuring the quality of infrastructure and service and safeguard well into the future. Let us ensure that this tax measure finds its place on the ballot, a vote for continued progress, safety, and prosperity for our beloved city. Thank you.
Kathy Bauer, followed by Chris Lawrenson, and then Thomas Kram, and welcome, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members and the staff. I'm here, Kathy Bauer, President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of San Marcos, representing our Board of Directors. On June 26th, our board voted unanimously, with one abstention, to endorse and support putting this measure on the ballot. Our board finds that this sales tax is important for the continued growth of our city and ensuring the safety. We feel it's important for our club, for the parents and the children that we serve. So thank you, and I do hope that you all vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up- Thank you, Kathy. Next up, Chris Lawrenson, followed by Thomas Karam, and then Imad Elias.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Chris Lawrenson, and I'm president of San Marcos Classified Miscellaneous Employees Association. Tongue twister. Did it. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I have been with the city for 19 years and have witnessed many ups and downs. However, I must share that this is the tightest our belt has ever been. Our team has been operating with limited resources for an extended period. We are finding it increasingly difficult to keep up with preventative maintenance and maintain and retain the high caliber of staff that the citizens of San Marcos deserve. This situation is unsustainable and impacts the quality of services we provide to our community. Letting the citizens vote on a modest tax increase of just one cent could make a significant difference. This small adjustment can provide the necessary funds to maintain our services, invest in preventative maintenance, and retain the skilled staff that our city relies on. It's a small price to pay for the betterment of our community and ensures that San Marcos continues to thrive. I respectfully urge the city council to grant citizens of San Marcos the right to vote for their future, including the proposed 1-cent sales tax increase. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Chris. Up next, Thomas Karam, followed by Imad Elias, and then Angelica Santiago. Welcome, Thomas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Thomas Karam, and I'm here tonight to urge you to vote yes on the upcoming tax measure. As a concerned citizen, a resident of District 3, and also an employee of this great city, I believe that this measure is crucial for our city's future. As you are aware, our city has operated leanly for years, but unfortunately, our revenues have not kept pace with expenses. It is not fiscally responsible to use reserves or one-time fees, funds for ongoing expenses. This measure will provide a sustainable source of revenue to support our city's growing needs. Our city's infrastructure is in dire need of attention. Traffic congestion is a significant concern, and it's essential that we address it to ensure public safety and quality of life for all residents. This measure will provide the necessary funding to make meaningful improvements to our roads and traffic management systems. Our parks and trails are a treasure in our city, but they require maintenance and upkeep to remain high-quality. If we don't prioritize these amenities, they will deteriorate, and families will no longer be able to enjoy them. This measure will ensure that our parks and trails continue to thrive for generations to come. So tonight, I urge you to vote yes on the tax measure and let the citizens of San Marcos make their decision. The great citizens of San Marcos deserve the right to vote on their future, and it's up to the city council to allow them that opportunity. Well, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Thomas. Next up, we have Imad Elias, Angelica Santiago, and then we have, actually, real quick, while you're walking up, we have a few people that don't wish to speak, but they would like their names read, so I will do that right now. Hayden Simmons, Kelly Simmons, Morgan Simmons, and Emma Simmons. And then we also have Gina Simmons, Zoe Simmons, and Ava Simmons. The whole family is here. I think it's two families, actually. Thank you for coming, and thank you for, anyway, I'll let you go ahead and speak, Matt.
I am not a Simmons. My name is...
Okay.
Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Imad Elias. I live and own property in District 4. I stand here before you, along with my coworkers, friends, neighbors, family, developers, business owners, firefighters, sheriffs, to advocate for your support on this tax measure. This tax measure would significantly enhance our public safety, city finances, infrastructure, and I have direct knowledge of the city's efforts to maintain its roads, parks, pools, infrastructure, and safety efforts. But the money simply isn't there anymore to maintain them to a level our residents expect and deserve. If you support this tax measure, the voters and the voters approve it, everyone who lives and visits San Marcos will see a direct and immediate benefit from it for years to come. So I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Next up, Angelica Santiago, followed by Bryant Vrombaugh, and then Lindsey Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, mayor, and staff. I hope you all have been staying hydrated with this weather, and thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Angelica Santiago, and I am a community educator at Universidad Popular. I am here to speak on behalf of the Tax Initiative. Just some info, Universidad Popular has been able to speak with many parents, community members, especially in District 1, and different schools such as San Marcos Elementary, in our community classroom, and through canvassing door-to-door, to have these platicas, right, these conversations with them. As well, July 3rd, on the evening, Universidad Popular and the San Marcos Fire Department hosted an info session about this measure just for the purpose of education and to have our community members be more civically involved, right? We want them to participate. We want them to be involved in this process because that's for them. In addition, our Universidad Popular team has been hosting outreach events utilizing the provided City of San Marcos info sheets, thank you for providing those, to share about this information, to make sure they're able, once again, to make sure we hear their voice. So throughout our platicas, our conversations with our community members, they have shared with us that they love, what they have loved, what they love about our city, and what needs to be improved. Our community members have shared that they love our community, and they love that there's a sense of community. They feel backed up, right? They love that the resources are nearby, such as local shopping centers, schools, community colleges, universities, clinics. They feel safe. They love the parks. They are grateful for their incredible connection with their schools at the elementary level, and they love the weather. But they also share that there's need of improvement, especially in the housing crisis, very expensive, not affordable. The city infrastructure, such as lighting, sorry, the safety being more safety, especially for emergencies and disasters such as floods that we have seen happen, the fires, more programming for youth for all levels, K-2 high schools, especially the middle school and high school youth, right, cultural enrichment, academic, career-wise, and prevention, right? Not just for them, but for our adults and our seniors. Community gardens, improvement, continue the improvement of transportation. And lastly, more culturally enrichment events happening here in our city. So to conclude, we're aware of the deficit, and definitely stopping or cutting or not growing in these programs is not the solution. So there definitely, there has to be a better solution, which is this tax measure. And I personally do support it because I went, I was here, a student from K-2, my university level at San Marcos, and it was all possible due to different programs. I was part of the Panorama program, which unfortunately is not there anymore due to funding, but thank you.
Thank you, Angelica. Next up, Bryant Vrombaugh, followed by Lindsey Smith, and then Jay Patrick. Welcome.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to speak once again, my second time. What I can say is that I, as the council knows, I do not live in San Marcos, but I'm a big fan, been here many times growing up, and you've got a lot of great people that have decided to show up and really talk about how much they appreciate things. What I'm going to say is, you know, me not being a constituent in your district or any one of your, in your city, you guys are going to do, you know what's best for you. I'm 100% a believer in self-governance, the republican form of government, the fundamental type of government that our country was founded upon, where it gave responsibility to citizenry to direct their futures. You know, one thing I will say is that what I did notice in your slide is we've got right now about what, I think I counted like 14 or something cities in San Diego that are in very similar positions where they are having to increase revenue, revenue generation. Now, I'm not saying things are ever going to be free because they're not, okay? What I'm saying is that, you know, what this measure is about is going on in every other city because of, you know, price inflation that everybody's feeling. You know, I know, I was kind of shocked how we didn't have any sort of, you know, any nose that came up here, not shocked, but, you know, as the, as our day-to-day existence has changed, and retailers, I mean, there's probably, within the 200 people in this room, there's probably 300 Amazon deliveries that occurred today. There's a lot of sales tax revenue that didn't occur. You know what I'm saying? In other words, things have changed. And ultimately, you know, when I started getting my opinion out about how taking the money out of political campaigns, what I will say is that I've always seen the firefighter union support this, and the sheriff union support that, signs on the side of the road. And I, I'm looking forward to seeing those again. I'm looking forward to people, you know, making an informed decision. I appreciate all the first responders. God bless you. Definitely, we've got a lot of things to fix in America, but the republican form of government is how we're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryant. Next up, Lindsey Smith, followed by Jay Patrick, and then Becky Garrett.
Good evening. My name is Lindsey Smith, and I'm the president of the Santa Leo Hills HOA. I am not here on behalf of the HOA, but I did want to share my perspective and relate and speak to, in support of adding the local general transaction and use tax to the November ballot. The HOA has also had to raise its dues for the first time in 10 or 15 years due to the rising costs of insurance, wages, construction, just to name a few. We want our community to be well-maintained. We want our community to be well-supported. We want our infrastructure to be repaired and replaced in a proactive manner, not via reactive or emergency maintenance that results in downtimes, inconveniences, and greatly impacts our quality of life. Despite operating a lean organization and actively pursuing cost-reduction initiatives, there simply wasn't enough resources to keep up with the high quality of living and services that our residents expected of us. Our residents have the same expectations of the city of San Marcos. We expect a clean, safe, and well-maintained city. We want our parks maintained and updated so our kids can play safely outside. We want to recruit and retain the best public service employees that I see here filling this room. We want our streets maintained and safe. We want a quick response time when we call 911 in an emergency. For all those reasons, I urge the city council to support placing the tax measure on your November ballot.
So we have Jay Patrick, followed by Becky Garrett, and then Chris Freeman will be finishing. Welcome.
Welcome, or thank you, Mayor, and appreciate the opportunity to speak before all of you and the public. My name is Jay Patrick. I'm a 32-year resident of the city of San Marcos. We moved here when my family was really young. We raised them all through college, and we hope to stay in San Marcos for the rest of our lives. For the last several months, I've been involved in a committee for the Safe and Strong San Marcos. It's the infantile group that, in our infantile stages, put information out there to get the word out about the sales tax measure. It's expanded to include several of those. It includes Councilmember Sinella and Deputy Mayor Sharon Jenkins. And I have been amazed at the groundswell of support that has been, that has reared its head in the last several months regarding this measure. I mean, I can't think of anything in my experience of either public involvement or on committees where you've got such a wide range of stripes of people who are supporting this measure. And a lot of work has gone just to get it to this point, and a lot of work, if this gets voted to go to the ballot, will be needed to get the support to grow. We just started a website. It just was launched this morning. It's in its very young stages, safestandstrongsanmarcos.org. We have approaching 200 endorsers for this measure, and it is growing, so we're encouraging people to get involved in that. And again, once, if this is put forward to the ballot by you all tonight, the real work will begin, and that will be getting information out to the community to show the support and the need for this measure. And you have a legion of support behind me who will be out there, basically beating the bushes to encourage residents to support this. There's, a lot of us are aware of it, but when I go out and talk to my neighbors, there's really a lot of either confusion or lack of information about it, and so that'll be the job of getting the information out in the next several months if this does go to the ballot. I encourage you to place this on the ballot. It's the right thing to do, and I look forward to improving San Marcos, and I'm confident that this will be successful if we have the residents with the opportunity to vote on it themselves. Thank you very much.
Becky Garrett. Thank you, Jay, and welcome, Becky, and then followed by Chris Freeman.
I'm Becky Garrett. I live on Virginia Place in San Marcos. When I moved here as a rookie teacher 50 years ago, I rented one of six cottages that had been World War II officer's quarters. My landlady had purchased them from the military and moved them onto her 240 acres smack in the middle of what is now Santa Leo Hills. I thought I had died and gone to heaven. I still feel that way about this city. How lucky are we to live here? In spite of bittersweet growing pains, San Marcos has somehow managed to remain sort of a nirvana for its residents. But I'm concerned that we may no longer have the financial resources to maintain the quality of life we're used to. I don't think we're suffering from any kind of bloated city budget or Ash Street debacle or mismanagement. I think we're suffering from a revenue percentage problem that we can fix. And by fixing it, we can retain control of the revenue and how it's spent. Please allow your constituents to vote on this issue. If it fails, you have your work cut out for you. If it passes, you have the resources on your watch to keep our quality of life, our property values, and our slice of paradise. Please let the people decide. Put this measure on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky, and Chris Freeman is our last speaker.
Good evening. Thank you, honorable mayor, council members. Chris Freeman, I'm an 11-year resident of San Marcos with my family of six. I'm a six-year member of the Volunteer Budget Review Committee here at the city, and I'm a proud endorser of safestandstrongsanmarcos.org. I'm here tonight to say thank you to this council. Thank you for your openness to this issue. Thank you for your willingness to be influenced. And thank you for the courage to make the decision that you know is right for the residents of San Marcos. Flexibility is a key trait for all public officials. The ability to recognize when an issue is unique, when a situation requires you to look within and go against possible preconceptions is a necessary quality for our elected leaders. You can still be loyal to your values while understanding that each situation must be looked at independently. This council has identified the next step in securing the future for our city. I know that each of you feel it in your gut that this is the right path forward. Your willingness to do what is right for the residents that you govern will not be forgotten. It's rare that we go a single meeting without someone mentioning the foresight and vision that past city councils and managers had in developing the CFDs, redevelopment, and commercial real estate portfolio. Those same people will be certain to speak fondly of this council for your foresight and vision to secure the financial health of this city by keeping these funds here under local control. I'm going to go a step farther tonight in what I ask of you, because the people of San Marcos need you. We need you not only to put this measure on the ballot, but to take a formal position as a council tonight to support this issue. Stand up and say why you think this is the right decision for the city of San Marcos. Fight with us, starting tomorrow and all the way through November, to see that this measure passes. That will be your legacy here at the city. That will be your legacy here at the city. Future generations will remember the five of you for the vital role that each of you played in ensuring that San Marcos residents can continue to thrive and strive. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, now we have, would you care to start us off?
Sure.
Councilmember Musker.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, since, since this is the worst-kept secret in the city right now, I've had questions asked of me. Are you, are you going to, as the council, enact, enact a tax? So, you know, you have to do a little research. Some of you history buffs, some of you know constitutional law, will understand that the question is always asked about this country, are we a democracy or representative republic? Well, we're kind of a blend of both, because our constitution, federal and state level, clearly define the authorities that we have. And as a city council, this is as close as you're going to get to a true democracy when it comes to enacting laws. Our, our duties and responsibilities are to set policy, to provide guidance, provide that vision, work with our city manager who runs our city day-to-day, and bring together a lot of great ideas, and be that conduit for the residents to come into local government and see projects and ideas that they have enacted. And I began discussions regarding our financial situation shortly after I was elected in 2020. And it was pretty clear to me that we were heading to a critical point where our revenues were being outstripped by the quality of life that we all expect, the maintenance levels that we need and we appreciate, and the values that we all share as a community. So, the issue before us this evening and the impacts it will have, as it was clearly stated, on our city for years to come, is whether we, as your council, will act under our authority as your elected representatives. So, we are not empowered to initiate taxes. But there are two sides to look at these tax measures. Some of our neighboring cities, other cities in our county, have elected to go with the Citizens Initiative, and that is extremely expensive, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get the paperwork together, get the signatures together, to get it on the ballot, as opposed to a council resolution. So, sometimes it does come down to the resolve of the council. And as it was stated a moment ago, there are some political pressures, some aspects that, if you're committed to your community and you're committed to doing right by your community, what happens in two or four years should not really be the consideration. Because that will not just be your legacy, and you shouldn't say, "Well, this is what I want people to think about me." It's what I want people to think about my city. So, for that reason, we will all have a decision to make in November. I'm not a big fan of taxes. I've heard too many stories come down from Sacramento and Washington that if we just pass this, this is how the money will be spent. And yes, the money may be spent there, but then they just pull the money that was already budgeted for that process to move out. But we have a mechanism in place of oversight to ensure that every dollar that comes into the city is spent for the betterment of the residents of San Marcos. I'm convinced this proposal has been balanced against current and anticipated revenue, current and anticipated expenditures, which, as you saw on the chart, are already outstripping our revenues, and that we will employ to ensure every dollar is tracked and spent to the exclusive benefit of our city. For these reasons, I will be supporting the proposal and to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Councilmember Sinella.
So, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, I'll second it so we can continue the conversation. Sound good?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. And first off, thank you to everybody who came out tonight. This is by far the biggest crowd I've seen in my almost two years on the council. I really appreciate the, the community coming out and supporting this. I agree with everything that was said. If I was going to read everything that I wrote tonight, it would basically be repeating everything that's been said. So, I'm going to kind of really condense things in an effort to kind of keep time going. But for me, this is really an easy decision. It's never a tough choice to give our, our residents a voice, and that's really what this is going to come down to. In my two years on the council, I've been through a number of budget meetings, finance meetings. I am completely convinced that the city is today and has been for many, many years, running in a very fiscally sound manner. If I thought for one second that there was any kind of waste or efficiencies that could be driven, or opportunities just to cut more, then I would certainly look at that. But I know I can speak for the last two years, and I'm sure this has been going on before my time, we've been cutting. And every, every budget season that I've been here, it's been nothing but cutting. And eventually, you know, if you cut enough, you're going to hit bone, right? And, and we're at that point now where, with the rising inflationary pressures that everybody's facing, from the private sector to our own homes, and of course, the city's not immune to that, you know, we're at a point now where if we're in a position where we're going to have to continue to cut even further than we already have for many years, it's going to have a significant impact on our residents. And such an impact that they deserve a voice, and they deserve to gather the information that's going to be presented over the next few months, and make their own personal decisions as to what's best for them and their families, and what kind of San Marcos do they want to live in, in the coming decades. So, I'm, as was mentioned, I think Jay Patrick mentioned, I'm, I'm on the committee. I've already endorsed the initiative myself personally. My family has. And I'm obviously fully supportive of putting this on the, on the ballot in November.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start on, on my comments, and I don't plan to reiterate what's been said, but we did receive a comment that was emailed to the entire council after the agenda got published and this item was published. I do want to read it to make sure that this is part of our record and for the benefit of, of everybody who's here and listening. So, this is a comment that we received from Catherine Gray, a San Marcos resident. And it says, "Dear Phil Skolik, my name is Catherine Gray, and I'm a resident of San Marcos. I'm sending this email to you because I am not able to attend the city council meeting on July 9th, in which the council be hearing them from the community discussing and voting on the proposed sales tax measure. I would like to, I would like it to be known that I am in favor of the sales tax measure to help provide much-needed funds to maintain and improve city services such as fire and paramedic services, law enforcement services, and parks and recreation services. Please include my comments at the July 9th city council meeting. Thank you." And it's from Catherine Gray, San Marcos resident.
And business owner.
Thank you for, thank you for adding that. I just want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to hear that comment. For me, this is a really special night. It sounds strange to say that because we are asking our San Marcos residents to, to pay more. And it is very special for me to be here to see this because we're unanimous, right? We're on the same page. We're together. And it's so wonderful to see that, especially in this day and age where everywhere we look, we seem to be divided, and we seem to be facing opposition. And so I am grateful for this moment, and I hope we all take a moment to appreciate that and what this means for our residents, for our city, for our community. And I have to say, because I've been here for so long, I've been a resident for over 40 years, and this has been my home. It's going to continue to be my home. And I heard that from so many of our residents, right, today. And so, having said that, I have to, I have to give it a shout out to Mrs. Garrett, Becky Garrett, who was my English teacher. And I've never heard San Marcos be referred to as Nirvana, but I'm glad she did because that's exactly what it is. And it has been. It, it was in 1981 when I arrived with my family as an immigrant, a non-documented immigrant. It was just that in 1981, and it has been that for me and for my family. And one of the great things about our city is that it has been for so many of us, right? And so, when I heard, right, our residents say, I heard Matt Simmons say that he wants to raise his grandchildren here, that's what we all want, right? We want to make sure that, that is possible. And we want to make sure that the great quality of life we've all, we've all had continues. And so, that's really important for me. The other thing that I've heard tonight that was said is that collectively, we're willing to invest in our community. And that's so refreshing to hear because that is exactly what this is. It's an investment for all of us. And although we're not perfect, but just to hear that and to share that with everyone that spoke today, I think it's so significant. And I am also really glad to see that we will have, assuming that this passes, we will have an oversight committee that will ensure that these resources, right, will be utilized to continue our collective quality of life. So, for those reasons, I'm going to be supporting this tonight. So, thank you, everybody, for being here and making this really such an important night for all of us.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor.
And I also want to add, there was one more email that came in from Kathleen Smith, who couldn't be here tonight. So, if you want to put that on the record, Phil, she says, "I have a conflict with the meeting tonight, but am in favor of the vote for the sales tax." So, whoops, sorry. First thing I want to do is thank our staff who has worked tirelessly to research this opportunity, go out in the community, share facts, and answer questions. This truly has been a team effort, and I think we should be very proud of all of you who have been working so hard to get us to tonight. Next, I want to thank all of you that are here tonight. Many of you have been behind this effort since the very beginning. And I'm so proud to live in this community that really comes together when needed. Since our council workshop meeting last December, I've asked many questions, all of us have, shared comments along the way. So, you'll be happy to know I will not have a lot of questions and comments tonight. The speakers have more than adequately covered the need and the support. I do just have three comments. When I started talking to people about this, everybody I talked to expressed their appreciation and support for the quality of life we have in San Marcos. And they want it at a minimum to stay the same and hopefully improve with future enhancements. As public servants up here, I believe we best serve our community when we stay in our lane, which has been mentioned, and we do what's best for San Marcos. Sitting up here tonight takes courage, wisdom, and passion for our community. And I can't think of anything that is more important to stay in our lane than working to make San Marcos a better place to live, work, and play with this ballot measure. As a council member, I believe in approving this item tonight and helping pass this ballot measure is the right thing to do. As a resident of San Marcos, I will do whatever it takes on my own time and my own dime to help this ballot measure be successful. So, thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I think having so many people in the audience today proves what I know to be true, and that is that we've got a really special place here. San Marcos is a remarkable community. And, you know, I've had the, the honor and the privilege of serving it for 18 years. And I've always had three things that are important to me. One is being fiscally responsible, which I know we have been, having a high quality of life, and keeping people safe. And those three things have served us so well. That's why we're one of the top 20 places for families to live in the whole country. It's not by chance. It's because we've been very intentional in doing that. So, I, you know, when I, I look around and I think about, you know, I moved here in 1987, and I think about all of the things that have happened between now and then, I, I am actually amazed how people come time after time to support the community. While I'm somewhat reluctant about putting this on the ballot for the reasons of it being a very tough time right now financially for a lot of our families, I mean, I hear that time and time again, people are really struggling. I also know that I've always supported and believed that our residents should be involved in the community. They should have their voices heard. They should be able to have their votes, their collective votes counted time and time again. So, when it comes to our quality of life, and the ones, we are the ones that deserve to choose for our community what we decide. And that's at the ballot box. So, I will always honor, I will always support and respect our rights to choose what is most important to our collective community. So, therefore, I will also be placing this measure on the ballot this November for our community to choose what is the quality of life that we want when we move forward together. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. We'll take a vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And again, thank you all for coming this evening. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. But if not, I thought, I thought that was a good idea. We can let you all, oh, everyone's leaving. We're that boring. Oh, geez. We're going to give everyone a chance to leave that wants to leave, and it looks like it's nearly everyone. And as we're doing that, we're going to get our speaker slips Okay, next up is going to be oral communications. We have three speakers. It'll be Warshon Ismail, followed by Alejandra Coronado, and then Christina will be next.
Sorry, just a moment. Wait, this isn't public comment, right?
Yes, this is public comment. Sorry, we took the agenda a little bit. I, I'm not sure if you were here.
Oh, no, you're good.
We kind of moved things around because we knew a lot of people were going to be speaking.
Sounds good. So, this isn't for item four, correct?
No, this is oral con, yes, public comment, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay. Today marks 277 days since October of occupation, apartheid, and massacre in Palestine. Now more than ever is the time to speak out and let the city know what you stand for. Numerous humanitarian agencies have come out with reports that the death toll in Gaza, Palestine, has surpassed 40,000 lives. This is not taking into consideration the thousands under rubble, missing, and unaccounted for. Your silence is a choice. Your silence is betrayal, and your silence is complicity. Our demands for a permanent, immediate, and bilateral ceasefire in Palestine, divestment from organizations that affiliate with the genocide, and ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people, as well as properly vetting out San Marcos investments are within your jurisdiction. By staying silent, you are refusing our demands, not maintaining neutrality or preserving the peace for the sake of being bipartisan. You choose the side of the oppressor, and you do not condemn t- You choose the side of the oppressor, and you do not condemn terrorism and violence inflicted on the Palestinian people. Prioritizing profit over war, is that what the city stands for? Ignorance, violence, ambiguity. Why are you refusing to represent the voices of your constituents? Innocent civilians are tortured, sexually assaulted, and brutally murdered. Why will you not support a ceasefire resolution? Ed, earlier you mentioned how this was the closest to true democracy we can witness. So why do you refuse to listen to your constituents? A ceasefire is just a declaration that you do not want Palestinians to be massacred, as they have been for the past 75 years and 10 months. What part in this call for peace are you having a hard time getting behind? Mike, Ed, Rebecca, Sharon? Why do you refuse to represent the voices of your constituents?
Thank you. Next speaker is going to be Alejandra Coronado, followed by Christina. Welcome, Alejandra.
Today, I wanted to share with you the profound sadness and distress that grips Palestine, particularly Gaza and Rafa, places that were meant to be a safe place for displaced Palestinians, but have instead become the complete opposite. Rafa, a symbol of protection for Palestinians, is now relentlessly bombarded, leaving the children and Palestinians in constant fear and anguish. How can we accept this? In recent days alone, over 90 Palestinians in Gaza have been brutally killed by Israel forces. They have bombed refugee camps, schools, fired upon refugees from helicopters, and even raided the homes of journalists. How can anyone witness this and not see it as a tragedy of unimaginable proportions? The staggering toll is unbearable. Over 40,000 Palestinians, many of them children, have lost their lives. Children in Gaza are searching for food because supplies are deliberately withheld by Israel forces. The facts are undeniable, and they are there for everyone to see if you care to look and educate yourselves. We just ask for one thing, one thing, and to put this on the agenda, call for a ceasefire. There is no justification for the silence that surrounds this suffering. If you refuse, is it out of ignorance or indifference? Other nations have acted, why haven't we? Why haven't you, Rebecca Jones? To those who support Israel, consider this if you think it's about Hamas. Hamas didn't even start until 1987, long after the tragedy began in 1948. This isn't about politics, it's about humanity. I refuse to remain silent while others are suffering. How can anyone celebrate independence while we are funding to Israel who's removing the independence of Palestinians? How does that make sense? This isn't about race, religion, or nationality, it's about basic humanity. If children's lives matter to us at all, they matter equally, regardless of where they are born. It's time to confront the uncomfortable truth and demand action. Please consider to put it on the agenda to call for a ceasefire. Silence only perpetuates suffering. Let us not lose our humanity in the comfort of our own privilege and freedom.
Thank you, Alejandra. Next up, Christina, followed by Bryant.
Hello. Here to remind you that there is life beyond the borders of San Marcos, that there are things that need your attention more than an abundance of recreational parks. You have seen the death, destruction, and devastation that our country has helped cause. You cannot deny that statement, and yet you have nothing to say about your money being used to murder children. We're asking you to help us demand a stop to the mass murders of innocent civilians, and all you can do is sit there and stare at us like you don't understand the language we're speaking. It's so ridiculously pitiful that a group of grown adults can be so greedy for privilege and cold-hearted witnessing the tragedies taking place. How do you expect us to trust you, much less respect you, when you can't even voice your concerns over the things we're concerned about? I'm tired of you mentioning how tight our budget is and how you're stretching our dollar. Go tell that to the people who are taking it away from us and allocating it to unjust murders across the globe. Stop thinking that your role as city council is so minuscule that the only thing you can do is build parks and promote small businesses. You can contribute to change for the betterment of humanity, not only for the people in this community, but also those connected to the people in this community. I am also still expecting you to apologize for your poor choice of words you said to your constituents, Mayor Jones. You and I both know that as a white woman, with the sheriff and officers right behind you, you are in absolutely no danger. In fact, your silence on this matter shows a large threat to us people of color asking for your support. Please put a resolution for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire on the agenda.
Thank you, Christina. Bryant? Welcome, Bryant.
All right, thank you, guys, again. So every time I come up here to one of these podiums, you know, it's a little bit hard for me because I honestly, I have so much that I want to say, and I'm always looking at a clock and all that good stuff. You know, what I will say is that I did get a chance to talk to a few of those young people at the end of last meeting, and I tried to give them some good advice, the best I could. And what I can say is that we are not in any imminent threat by them, okay? You know, Rebecca, I'm not going to be pointing this thing at you or anything like that, but when I do come up to any one of these meetings, I'm just trying to provide solutions. And really what that involves is taking the money out of political campaigns. And I do recognize that in our constitutional republic, our union of states, democracy is certainly a function that we need to best utilize. And it pains my heart when any time I'm at one of these councils, and it's a packed house, and then that one thing goes, and then they're all out the door. It's a symptom of where we're at in society. And, you know, we need to have engagement. You know, what I can say is that freedom of speech, Rebecca, you know, even that young, I can't remember if it was a girl or a boy, whoever said that, you know, they were hounding you, let's just say, you know, I don't believe that you were threatened by them. It could have been a bad choice of words. I've made a thousand mistakes, I continue to do, that's why I continue to seek repentance, okay? But what I will say is that I don't care, you know, whether people are sitting here, you know, if they go for Allah, if they go for, you know, which side of this hot-button issue over there in Israel they're going to, you know, or which side of abortion they're on. I mean, obviously, I do care, but there are some things that are worth fighting for, and there's other things that, you know, it's best for me to walk away. But, you know, what I will say is that that is actually very true, what that young lady said about, you know, Hamas being started very late in the game. Even Ron Paul, the guy that wanted to, the congressman from Texas, who wanted to audit the Federal Reserve, he actually sat in front of Congress and said how Hamas, according to him, was actually started by Israeli Mossad, okay? So we need to, you know, they need to have a boogeyman at point. And I'm just a messenger on this, okay, from what I saw. What I can say is that freedom of speech is important. In America, it should be one of those things that unites us, okay? God-given rights, democracy is important, all those firefighters. I meant to say while I was up here that I'm a big fan of the volunteer fire department, where men are allowed to be men. I grew up in a society, I had firefighter guys that had three businesses on the side. Okay, I'm not talking anything about them, but, you know, we need to cut costs. And Palomar College and CSUSM, that's a big tax.
Thank you, Bryant. All right, we will be moving on to public hearings. So, oh, everyone's already queued up. We are now on item number four, ordinance number 2024-1544, ordinance repealing and replacing municipal code Title 12 regarding motor vehicles and traffic.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will be presenting to you tonight on this first item for ordinance 2024-1544. And before I do that, I'd like to introduce someone to you. You may or may not have met him yet. Please meet Mr. Edmund Alberto. He has joined San Marcos almost six months ago now as our city traffic engineer. And so his perspective and his work towards this ordinance and the next item that you'll hear tonight were critical in bringing this forward to you. So this is the first reading of ordinance 2024-1544, and this ordinance proposes to repeal and replace the existing Title 12 municipal code pertaining to motor vehicles and traffic. Title 12 has a relatively broad scope. It seeks to promote efficient transportation, but it also includes provisions on things like parking, and it identifies the truck routes for the city. In our changes, we've made some pretty sweeping housekeeping items that you'll see scattered throughout the ordinance. First, we've changed the nomenclature from Traffic Safety Commission to Traffic Commission, which better reflects the way that we actually call Traffic Commission today. We've also made authority changes that parallel our current organizational structure. So authority has been shifted from the Public Works Director to the City Engineer, or City Traffic Engineer, or City Manager, depending upon the type of action to be undertaken. We've also updated California Vehicle Code references throughout the title. The authority to establish on-street parking and no parking is clarified by the proposed revisions. The City Manager may establish any of these by administrative resolution, and the City Council may likewise establish them by resolution or ordinance. In doing so, they must follow the standards and limitations that we have included in Title 12, or as may be determined by the adopting resolution. Sleeping in parked automobiles was addressed in Sections 1220, 120 through 1220, 140, and those sections are proposed to be deleted, consistent with another item that you'll hear tonight, which proposes a separate ordinance to amend Section 9.04070 and to add Chapter 10.33. The major change that we have made to the chapter is the addition of a whole new section, 12.25, which addresses bike and e-bike regulations and their use on public streets and in public places. So as we're seeing the rise of bikes and e-bikes, it is important for us to be able to regulate some of these issues, and our new chapter in the municipal code proposes to do that. It proposes to make it unlawful to ride a bike on a sidewalk in a business district, and where bike riding on the sidewalk is allowed to require that the sidewalk be yielded to pedestrians. It also has a provision that speaks to parking a bike or laying a bike on a sidewalk in such a fashion that it does not interfere with pedestrian travel. As far as riding on handlebars, this is a behavior that we see particularly with school-age children quite a bit, and it is an unsafe behavior. The new chapter makes it unlawful to ride or carry another person on one's handlebars, and also to ride or carry in any way that the bike is not designed for. We speak also in the new title or the new chapter to hands-free cellphone use. So a cellphone may be used while riding a bike, provided that it is in a hands-free mode. Otherwise, that cellphone use is only allowed in emergency situations. When a helmet is otherwise required by the California Vehicle Code, our Chapter 12.25 would make it unlawful to wear that helmet in any fashion other than the way that it is designed. This means it is insufficient to place the helmet on your head and not clip or otherwise fasten it, and that it must be worn properly. Finally, the chapter provides for diversion, which allows diversion to an agency-approved bike safety program, if one is available, for people who are found to violate the provisions as provided in the municipal code. This allows an educational approach that will improve compliance and improve education amongst cyclists. We've made modifications to truck routes as well. The limits of several of them have been corrected and updated, and then three of them on Via Veracruz, on Pico, and on Linda Vista have been deleted. It should be noted that the CVC allows trucks to drive on other routes as necessary to reach any loading or unloading destination. They just need to do that deviation the shortest possible distance from the truck route. So this does not affect the delivery of any goods or services, but it does update our truck routes to reflect current traffic patterns through the city. In environmental review, we found that this is not a project, as defined under Section 15378 of SEQA. It has no potential to result in a direct or indirect physical change to the environment. And if it were found to be a project, again, it would be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that this proposed ordinance would have a significant effect on the environment. So in conclusion, we recommend that you introduce the following: the first reading of ordinance 2024-1544, repealing and replacing the existing municipal code Title 12 regarding motor vehicles and traffic. And our engineering staff is here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember.
Regarding the bike safety program, do we know if we have one in place or intend to have one in place as an alternative? I think you alluded to some punitive measures, such as a citation maybe by the sheriff.
Yes, and we're allowing for the program to grow in that direction in the future. Currently, safety programs are provided through the sheriff's office, and the sheriff would need to have resourcing to provide such an approved safety program. We did coordinate with the sheriff's office in the development of this ordinance, and they concur with the changes that we are putting into it. So while there's not a program that we're aware of today, we expect that that could be a possibility through the sheriff's office or other avenues in the future.
And I'm wondering if any of our neighboring cities have programs, so that, you know, you receive a citation in Chula Vista, you don't have to go to traffic school in Chula Vista, as long as there's an approved bike safety program, where a certificate might be issued.
I believe the city of Encinitas is working with the sheriff's department and their jurisdiction to provide that similar diversion program.
Okay. Look forward to an update. Thank you.
So I would assume one's forthcoming, then, if they're working on that. Yes, Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you for the great presentation, and this is another one of those ordinances that I'm glad that we're taking time to review and update. Probably top three issue that I've heard in my time on the council has been around e-bikes, as they become more and more prevalent. And I think they're here to stay. I think they're actually going to increase in popularity. And so for us to be proactive, us being the city and staff and the council, and being proactive around kind of putting that safety awareness around the e-bikes and putting some parameters, not just for the safety of the riders, but also for the pedestrians, I think is absolutely key. And I'm glad that we're doing it proactively and not waiting for a really bad incident, which could happen, to kind of, to drive that change. We're doing it before something happens, and that's really a positive thing for our community. So thank you.
Well, unfortunately, I think we've already had a few incidents where people have knocked over pedestrians in San Diego.
Yeah, I'm talking about a really bad incident.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, like life-threatening sort of accident, yeah. I'm with you. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of follow-up questions to what's been asked. In terms of the diversion or the class that, what will the timeline look like if we approve this? In terms of the enforcement, if there are any citations, what is that going to look like? What will the diversion options be available? That's not clear to me.
I can jump in on that. One of the options that are currently available through the San Diego County resources is the Bicycle Coalition provides free classes, bike skills trainings and workshops. So we do have a resource available to us. We are currently also collaborating with the school district. So it's been a collaboration between the sheriff's department, the school district, some of these additional partners in the biking community to provide additional education. So we are going to be doing a Spanish workshop for children over at SME before the school goes, before schools go back in August. The school district is creating a permit program so that they will have the ability to permit e-bikes at the school, so that if there are infractions, they have the ability to revoke that permit. to revoke that permit, which then means that the parents have to bring the kids back to school rather than them riding the bike. So that will be somewhat of a punitive measure if there isn't compliance. And the sheriff's department is focused on educating primarily. If there are really egregious infractions that we do hear of occasionally with multiple people on one bicycle charging down the street, going multiple miles per hour, there will be instances where tickets might be issued, but the goal is going to be to educate and to try to modify behavior.
Thank you for that. I do have a follow-up question. It seems like it is our city policy to try to give warnings or try to, we have a period of time where that might be a possibility. Is that what we're contemplating here, where we would have a period of time where these individuals, these students, would get some sort of warning before any sort of citation might be issued?
Yes, I think we recently had an operation where the deputies were out in San Lejo, and they were essentially educating and providing warnings to people who were not following the rules. So I think the goal is not to issue a number of expensive citations and create tickets and create backlog in the system. I think the goal really is to modify the behavior that we're seeing that needs to change in the community for the safety of the pedestrians and the bicyclists. So our goal is to educate, to provide a warning, to try to partner with the school district to make sure that we get some compliance. And then in situations where we're not seeing cooperation or compliance, we will have this additional tool in our toolbox now to try to enforce a change in behavior, if behavior is not adapting willingly.
Nothing further from me.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I think my, some of my questions were just answered, and it had to do with the enforcement. I think we've all been concerned about some sort of tragedy happening in the community with either somebody on an e-bike or somebody, e-bike running into somebody else. So while I think trying to modify the behavior is a good thing, I think at some point, I hope we don't hesitate going into some enforcement mode when needed, because that might save somebody from maybe continuing a bad behavior. So that's my only comment.
I agree with all of that, and there is one thing that I don't agree with. On page eight of 36 of the actual Title 12, it says, it's 12.12.070, unauthorized painting of curbs. There is one thing that I don't agree with on that, and I don't know how anyone else feels, but the curb house numbers painted on the curb shall be included in the general prohibition. Well, that would mean that a lot of our community would get a ticket. And we have a lot of folks that, I mean, I haven't had it at my house now, but at my old house, I remember this guy showed up and he goes, hey, I'm painting curbs, and do you want your number on there? Because it's really easy for people to do that. And I'm like, well, sure. And he's like, okay, I don't know, it's cheap. It was like maybe 20 bucks or something like that. And I was like, oh, this guy, you know, he's an entrepreneur. I would have been in trouble, too. I think that that in itself, I don't have it now, but I feel like that in itself, I don't really, I don't really like that, because I feel like we would have too much of the city in violation of that prohibition. So I personally would like to strike that. So I would, this is a public hearing, so we haven't even closed a public hearing yet, but maybe the rest of the council could weigh in, and your thoughts on that?
When I saw that section, my first thought was, in my entire neighborhood.
Your neighborhood?
In my entire neighborhood.
My neighborhood.
And we have those people that will come by for 15 or 20 dollars. It just makes it so much easier for visitors, the Amazon driver, whomever, to get a good feel they can look to the left and say, okay, these are the odd numbers, these are the even numbers. And it's a small issue right now, but, you know, if we're going to be fair and we're going to be honest, we need to either say, yes, we are going to enforce that, which I think is really impractical, or strike it and maybe look at that section for anything other than the address. And some people like to put a small graphic on there, a flag, or, you know, their university flag, whatever they want to do is fine, as long as it's something that we can articulate as reasonable.
Well, it's not like a red curb, because I think, I think what our issue is probably
You cannot paint your own curb red. You can't restrict parking on a public roadway to suit your needs. You can't paint it blue if you have a member of the household. It has to be done by regulation and authority, but I think the numbers are just a little bit overreach.
All right. Rest of the council, did you want to weigh in?
I mean, I agree that it, I'm assuming that there's, the response is going to be that's outside the spirit of what was documented there, but if it was inside the spirit of the documentation, then I probably would rather see that taken out.
Yeah.
And this particular ordinance number alludes back to January of 97. It's possible this was something that in the revision process was just, if you look at unauthorized painting of curbs, well, absolutely. But if you look at the way it's worded, maybe we should have just taken that last portion out or added, the exception being the address of the residence.
Would it make a difference if it said, in the parents' curb house numbers painted on the curb shall be excluded from the general prohibition?
Sounds good to me.
Okey-dokey.
All right. Okay.
I like an easy answer.
Let's close the public hearing. Do, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Oh, wait, we don't have any, okay, double checking. Okay, motion and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Okay, public hearing is closed. I would make the motion with the change that Helen mentioned, that that would be.
Without the okey-dokey.
Yeah, without the okey-dokey.
One second.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Seeing none, okay. Motion passes unanimously without one modification. Moving on, oh, where's my agenda? To ordinance 2024-1545, approving an engineering and traffic study and establishing prima facie speed limits for specified city streets and amending the city of San Marcos traffic schedule for speed zones per San Marcos Municipal Code Section 12.04.020.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you guys are back. You switched seats, though.
Surprise. Thank you, Mayor. City Council Ed Alberto, City Traffic Engineer, will be presenting on this item tonight. So for an introduction, we'll be going through some background, how we set speed limits, the results of our engineering and traffic survey, and what our next steps will be and our recommendations. So for some background, we have about 120 roadway segments in the city of San Marcos that have posted speed limits. We do update those every few years in accordance with the California Vehicle Code. With us coming out of the COVID-19 lockdowns, traffic patterns have changed and driver behavior has changed over the last few years, coming out of that regionally as well as nationwide. So we're looking, we did a comprehensive citywide update to the engineering and traffic surveys to make sure that we set our speed limits consistent with driver behavior today. So when we're setting speed limits, we're bound by the California Vehicle Code. It's a set of laws by the state that dictate our rules of the road. Speed surveys must be updated periodically, every seven to 14 years. The last speed surveys were conducted in 2008 and 2017. Section 2235-8.6 requires that speed limits be posted at the nearest five mile an hour increment of the 85th percentile speed. That 85th percentile speed is a speed at or below which 85% of drivers travel under free-flowing conditions. So if it's the 85th percentile speed is, say, 33 miles an hour, 85% of people are not driving 33 miles an hour. They're driving at 33 or below that. And it's also considered the speed at which drivers will typically travel safely under environmental conditions. So when we're setting speed limits, we're doing rounding based on that 85th percentile speed, and for example, at a speed of 37 miles an hour, we would typically round down to 35 miles an hour. If it was 38, we'd round up to 40. So the California Vehicle Code does allow us to round down instead of rounding up. So at that 38 mile an hour example, rather than rounding up to 40, we can round down to 35. The California Vehicle Code also provides provisions to allow us to take an additional five mile an hour reduction, and that's in the case of like the 37 mile an hour reduction, where we round down to 35. We could additionally round down to 30, so taking that additional five mile an hour reduction, if it's justified by conditions not readily apparent. And these conditions not readily apparent are things that drivers traveling on a corridor may not be, be not, may not be thinking about as they're driving, such as bike and pedactivity, collision rate, driveway density as they're traveling down that corridor. The five mile an hour reduction cannot be applied if we do take that rounding down instead of rounding up. So if we round, say, at 38 mile an hour from, we round down to 35 instead of 40, in which case it's like we've kind of already taken that five mile an hour reduction. So the results of the engineering and traffic study that we did citywide and showed that there's 12 segments where we are going to reduce the speed limit. One segment on Linda Vista Drive from Western City Limit to West Linda Vista Drive, it's going to go down about 10 miles an hour from 40 to 30. The remaining 11 will be going down about five miles per hour, and those are on segments on Alameda Sway, Capelina Road, Las Poses Road, Linda Vista Drive, Ranch of Santa Fe Road, San Marcos Boulevard, Smilax Road, two segments on Twin Oaks Valley Road, Villa Veracruz, and West Linda Vista Drive. There are, however, two segments where the speed limit will be going up by five miles an hour. That is on Knoll Road from Mission Road to San Marcos Boulevard, and Melrose Drive from Ranch of Santa Fe Road to Santa Leo Road. Let's take a closer look at these two segments. This is Knoll Road from Mission to San Marcos. The red triangle is where the data was collected. Knoll Road does have a grade at Mission Road and San Marcos Boulevard, and it kind of plateaus where that data was collected. The existing speed limit is 35 miles per hour. The 85th percentile speed came in at 43 miles per hour. So rather than rounding up to 45, we opted to round down to 40, but there is no additional speed limit reductions we could take for this segment. And for Melrose Drive, between Ranch of Santa Fe Road and Santa Leo Road, again, the red triangle is where the data was collected. It's got some horizontal curvature and some vertical grades. The data was collected on that flat portion. The existing speed limit is 40 miles per hour. The 85th percentile speed is 48 miles per hour. And again, rather than setting the speed limit at 50 miles an hour, we are rounding down to 45 miles per hour with no additional reductions that can be taken. And just to note that west of Ranch of Santa Fe, from Carlsbad entering into San Marcos, the segment of Melrose is actually 55 miles per hour, and today it's a 15 mile an hour differential as you cross into San Marcos. And typically, we look at when you're transitioning from speed limits, five to 10 mile an hour change in speed limits going through a corridor. So the next steps is to have the second reading of the ordinance. Staff has prepared work orders for new signs and markings to replace the existing ones where they're going to be changed. We'll post a two-week notification on the segments where we are changing speed limits. Public Works will then install the new signs and markings, and the San David County Sheriff's Department will issue warnings for 30 days after the new signs are posted. Staff recommends approving and engineering a traffic survey and establishing prima facie speed limits for specified city streets and amending the city of San Marcos traffic schedule for speed zones per San Marcos Municipal Code Section 1204020. Questions?
Thank you, Alberto. Any questions of Alberto? Yes, council member?
The prima facie limits, 2555, school zones, residential business, maximum speed limit, those are not required to be surveyed, but the primary reason for this, other than notification to the general public, is to allow our deputies to use radar and lidar on those streets. Is that correct?
Correct. In order for law enforcement to issue citations based on radar, we have to set speed limits based on an engineering traffic survey.
So then they don't necessarily need to go into articulation into traffic court? As Dwight was unsafe, that's the benefit of having the survey, other than articulable facts that would reduce it an additional five or below instead of up?
Correct.
Okay.
And we do have 20 segments that meet the definition of a residence district, and those are going to be prima facie 25 miles per hour and not changing.
Are we able to benefit from any of the federal, local road rules, or, I know it's tough to get those through in traffic court?
We are following the current state laws.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? This is a, oh, sorry.
I have a question. I think this is for Helen. I think about, you might remember, Rebecca, maybe, I don't know, 10 years or so ago, we had a situation where residents wanted to reduce the speed. I think it was on Barham, and there were some issues with, I don't remember all the details, but there were some issues that, about that we couldn't do that, because if the sheriffs gave tickets and they went to court, that the, they would be thrown out or something to that effect.
I, I think they wanted it lower, because it wasn't within 10 or five miles. I think it was greater than that. I think it was possibly 15.
I don't remember.
Because I, I think they wanted it to be 25, and it was right by Marlene's Park.
Yeah.
Yes, it was by Marlene's Park. I think it was greater than 10, and that's why.
It did not qualify, and however it was marked as having qualified, and that any tickets that were issued were tossed.
Right.
So it was a waste of, which Ed Alberto is suggesting that we do and has provided a good framework for citations that will actually hold up in court.
Right, so that's, that was kind of my, my comment, is that this will provide a defensible situation for the sheriffs when they go to court with these, with these new speed limits, which we didn't have before when we tried that.
Unfortunately, it took a while for the news to trickle down from the courthouse, and it wasn't clear for quite some time just what the problem was, but it was finally explained, and that was the issue. It was an improperly set speed limit.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that this doesn't have anything to do with that. Thank you.
Okay. We do, do we have any other discussion? We do have one public speaker. Brian Duramba? Welcome.
All right, thank you again. So, you know, I was just thinking, you know, with the traffic that we've all kind of seen over the, me as well, I grew up around here. I grew up in Fallbrook, okay? So as the traffic has increased in all of our surrounding cities, as we've, you know, kind of really gotten into really these more densely populated, obviously, San Marcos, when I was a kid, as we talked about it and heard from many people, it was, it was a cool place. I mean, it still is, I'm just saying. It was a rural place. I remember going to that dump with my old man, and I've definitely heard that being talked about numerous times at the BOS. But, you know, I was looking at kind of that 85th percentile. There's a lot of people that are kind of worried that, you know, really, not only are we kind of being crammed, but we're also de-incentivizing driving, and we got a large, very, very extensive gas tax coming through that's really going to hurt a lot of people as well. I mean, we all agree on that, right? I'm assuming? Okay. We have just, you know, and safety, I love the e-bike thing. I actually had somebody close to me who, their son-in-law was injured on that. But transportation, actually, did you guys, did you guys know that the, that the root word of transport is pretty much moving an individual in a penal colony, as in a prison? Kind of interesting. I found that out at one of those BOS meetings. You know, all in all, all in all, we got, we got a lot of things to fix, as I said, but safety first, definitely revenue generation is important in this system. It's, it's pretty much what a lot of these agencies require. It's what's, it's, it's priority A. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to introduce? All, yes? I'll make the motion to introduce. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second all in favor? Aye? Any noes? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to number six, ordinance 2024-1546, adding Chapter 1033 to the San Marcos Municipal Code pertaining to encampments on city ten thirty-three to the San Marcos Municipal Code pertaining to encampments on city property and amending San Marcos Municipal Code Section nine point zero four point zero seven zero. And who is making this presentation? Mrs. Peake, is it you?
It will be Jill Mailand from my office, Assistant City Attorney, but I wanted to just preface the remarks by apologizing for the agenda packet, including the twelve point twenty, point one two oh through one four oh in the actual attachments. We had a glitch with Granicus when we were inputting, and we were also trying to respond quickly to the Grants Pass decision, so it was, it was my error. I thought I had switched out the attachment, so I apologize for any confusion. This ordinance has nothing to do with Chapter twelve. That was all done in the earlier ordinance, and in fact, we had, we had put them in the other ordinance and had taken them out here, but it didn't take in the attachment that was actually inputted into the agenda packet, so my apologies for that. And with that, Jill, if you could take.
Thank you, Helen. Is that working? This is my first time up here, so just testing. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to present you with the proposed ordinance, which would add a new Chapter ten point three-three to the municipal code entitled "Encampments on City Property" and would make conforming changes to Municipal Code Section nine oh four oh seven oh. And I wanted to, before I present the ordinance, give some legal and factual background to give you some context on, on the presentation and why we're bringing this forward to you for consideration. You're probably all familiar with a couple of recent decisions out of the Ninth District, Martin v. Boise and Johnson v. Grants Pass. Martin v. Boise essentially forbid cities from criminalizing sleeping in public places where they couldn't offer shelter alternatives to those who were sleeping. Johnson versus Grants Pass expanded that to include not only sleeping but camping and encampments and civil as well as criminal penalties. So the two of those cases taken together made it in the Ninth Circuit prohibitive for cities to enforce anti-camping ordinances in public spaces where they couldn't offer shelter alternatives. So after the advent of those two decisions, all the city, or a lot, many cities in the West have seen an increase in homeless populations, encampments, camping in public spaces. This includes, of course, as you know better than I do, I'm sure, the City of San Marcos. The most recent point in time count showed a change of two residents in that population to thirty-five, which is a pretty significant percentage-wise increase. The city has, on a factual level, can point to a significant increase in calls for service to its fire department, as well as calls regarding people living in RVs and other vehicles on city streets and other public spaces. The fire department, by way of example, has seen three hundred and thirty-one calls for service in this regard from two thousand and twenty-three, which was its highest year to date. It's also, within just the last couple of months, seen three fires related to homeless encampments or, or living in vehicles. Also, the calls for service have indicated people witnessing dumping of waste into storm drains, impediments to the traffic flow, including emergency vehicles, impeding sidewalks for public access. The city has also spent significant resources on clearing, environmental clearings to clear away encampments, including, as I understand it, about seventy-five thousand dollars a year to date to do that. Michelle, can please jump in if I get any of this wrong? And there are more details of those calls for service, including photographs supporting that within the, the staff report and packet that you have in front of you. So all of this led staff to identify a need to develop an encampment ordinance or camping ordinance for the city, similar to what was adopted by the cities of San Diego, Escondido, and others within the county. As we were developing the proposed ordinance, the Supreme Court came out with its decision on the appeal of the Grants Pass case, and the Supreme Court held that enforcing generally applicable laws regulating camping on public property did not constitute cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment. So this decision really restores the city's ability to enforce public camping laws. So with that background in mind, we bring forward to you tonight's proposed ordinance. And this ordinance would prohibit camping or establishing camp, camp, encampments, excuse me, on public property, which is defined as city-owned or city-controlled property. So it would include, you know, streets and easements and any property that the city owns. It would not affect private property, so this would only affect public spaces. And it would prohibit any camping or establishment of an encampment on that property. It also has special provisions for protection of the waterways, which prohibits, in addition to camping or establishing encampments, driving, parking, digging, storing items within waterways or the banks of the waterways. It would provide for enforcement of the ordinance under our existing Municipal Code Section one point twelve point oh one oh, which essentially allows the city to cite any violations as an infraction for the first three in a year, and if there's a fourth, that could be treated as a misdemeanor. There are also provisions for providing that any encampment would constitute a public nuisance, allowing the city to abate that nuisance by clearing away the encampment. However, it would require the city to provide notice, store anything that was removed, and allow anyone who was at that encampment to have notice of where to pick up their, their things. So that's essentially what we're bringing forward to you tonight, and I'm available for questions, as I'm sure Helen is as well.
Yeah, I, I actually have a few questions. So currently, when we're talking about criminalization, if you are speeding, you're, it's, it's a criminal, I mean, like, it's a criminal offense, right? Isn't that considered a criminal offense?
Infraction.
An infraction.
Depending on how fast you're going.
So is this is an infraction, or is it actually a criminal act? That would be my question.
Well, it would, the enforcement would be as an infraction.
Correct.
So it would, unless you got up to the fourth incident in a year, then you could treat it as a misdemeanor, which could result in potential misdemeanor penalties. Infractions would just be fines.
So it's, so the criminalization part is much like a speeding offense, with the criminalization being an infraction? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around that part of it. Is that, would that be correct?
Actually, the proposed ordinance does say that the enforcement may be prosecuted as misdemeanors. Our general response in the city has been initially to enforce things as infractions and then as misdemeanors. However, we have had a, a few situations with fairly egregious hard-line camping situations where, for health and safety purposes, for them as well as for others who are in contact with the detritus that is left behind, for example, that we could charge it as a misdemeanor. This gives prosecutorial discretion to the city, but I will say that even now, we have stormwater violations from certain RVs that are actually purposefully pumping black water into the storm drain, so it goes out to San Marcos Creek and then ultimately to the ocean. That violation of Chapter fourteen point fifteen is a misdemeanor. We are prosecuting that by way of an administrative or civil action. So we don't, we don't default to the criminal citation necessarily. If we do, it's generally to the infraction, but this allows us to enforce it as a misdemeanor if and when it is warranted.
Well, to that point, I guess, you know, if someone were to be living in a house, they would be treated the same way if they were pumping black water into the storm drain?
Absolutely.
Right. So there's no, there's no actual, okay, you happen to be homeless. I mean, I guess at the end of the day, I mean, we're not trying to not be compassionate. We're trying to take a step to protect our community in a way that keeps it looking clean, and we're following the stormwater issues, and we're making sure that, that, you know, the basic safety of our community and also the residents that are, that are homeless are all protected in a good manner.
No, and, and you raise an excellent point, and I think the, the dissent in the Grants Pass case was a very passionate one. It was almost as long as the decision in chief, and Justice Sotomayor was very, very passionate about asserting that the, that the majority was criminalizing the status of people as homeless. I, I think the majority opinion actually distinguished the Grants Pass case from other cases that, that discussed the status issue and did so, I think, very cleanly. The enforcement of this ordinance doesn't per se criminalize homelessness or the status of being homeless. What it does characterize, what it does allow the city to do is to essentially enforce against the behavior that, that comes along sometimes with the status, sometimes not.
Right.
But it would be enforced in that way against anybody who.
Whether you're homeless or not, correct.
That's correct.
Like, for instance, if you happen to be changing your oil in your driveway and you pump it out into, or you wash it out into the street and it goes in the storm drain, there's no difference between whether you're homeless or you're not homeless. You still have the same infraction.
That's correct.
Okay. That's, that's what I was trying to get at. So, and I don't know who's going to want to answer this one. So today, if you're homeless, what is the difference going to be in the process of what we are, how we are handling a situation from today and then the change with our ordinance? What would that difference be?
Jill, do you want to start?
Sure. Well, we, today, we are limited, well, I shouldn't say today, prior to the Supreme Court decision, we were limited because we needed to be able to offer shelter alternatives in order to take any action with respect to camping on our public property. With the adoption of this ordinance, we would ban camping by anyone on public spaces, and that would be irrespective of whether or not there was alternative shelter available. But that's not to say that the city wouldn't still take all the steps that it's been taking to provide or identify services and other options that persons may have that they could pursue to, to find alternative shelter or other services.
And we still store their belongings, and who pays for that currently?
We do, Madam Mayor.
And, okay, so the taxpayers, since we don't have our own money. Okay, so that's not going to change with the ordinance. It's still going to be borne by all of the taxpayers in San Marcos?
That, that is correct.
Okay. So can you explain to us what's happening right now with private property? Because I think, you know, I get a lot of, I get a lot of calls and a lot of emails on this. This is why I really want to delve into this. So if you're in a public space, so it's in, you know, like, on the side of the road, it's within our right-of-way, so we're responsible for that. That would be considered public space. However, if you're like in a, there was a homeless encampment that was right at.
Nordal.
I'm sorry?
There was one off of Las Poses. There was also one in a private shopping center.
Well, that's what I was going to get at, the Nordal Shopping Center.
And we have no control over the private property owner. They have the right under PC six oh two to post that property, call the Sheriff's Department, and have those persons taken off of their property.
Right. And they were out of town, so are we able to, I think, I think I remember that we have this, that they can, they can fill out a form with us or something that we can actually, if we notice?
It is not, it is not us. It is, they put a letter of agency in with the Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
And the Sheriff's Department can come, can go out there and enforce.
But it's our, but it's our sheriff department. It's our.
It's our sheriff's department, but it's not the City of San Marcos forces.
No, no, right, okay.
And we are not storing the personal belongings.
Okay.
On, on, on those situations. But the private property owner is able to contract, essentially contract by issuing that letter of agency to the law enforcement agency, which in this case also happens to be the, the Sheriff's Department, and they can go onto that site and take care of that problem. That is the same, that is the case, that was the case last month. It is the case today. It will be that way tomorrow.
Yeah, I was just making sure there was no change. I didn't believe there was.
The city had no ability to go on private property and abate that nuisance.
Right. But I have to tell you, people were saying, "You need to get out there, Mayor, and handle that." I'm like, "Well, first of all, I'm not doing anything myself like that," but.
That would have constituted a trespass also, frankly.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm not going to break the law. Quick question. So the HOA, I know there was at the back entrance of Palomar College, the HOA, that's also private property. It was, it was, though it was on the side of the road, but I think it was outside of our jurisdiction because it wasn't actually in the right-of-way, it was actually up on the embankment, I think. That is actually private property as well, and it wouldn't be any different than the actual shopping center, correct?
That's, again, that's private property.
Correct, okay.
And they had a remedy, they still have a remedy.
Right, okay. I just, I just wanted to double-check that so I could understand that part. And so, let's see, if I had any other questions? Okay, no, I, I, those are all for now, but if anyone else has any questions about this? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove? Oh, Maria? Sorry, Councilmember Nunez, my apologies.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some follow-up questions about the, the enforcement. It's, it's not clear to me really what that looks like for us today and how the enforcement has been done, because as I'm looking at what's being proposed today, and I did hear Helen already mentioned some of this, in terms of when I see that we're looking to change, I see dumping waste into storm drains. It was my assumption that we already have codes and laws in place to address this. So it is not clear to me exactly what it is that we're do, that we're doing, other than criminalizing potentially the status of, of somebody that's unhoused. So particularly, what would help me is if somebody can describe what an actual enforcement action looks like now. It's not clear to me when city staff is involved, and we're looking at a civil enforcement action versus when our law enforcement, when our sheriffs are involved, and we're looking at criminal action. That's still not clear to me, so it's not clear what is in place, and will this, and what will this actually allow us to do?
Let me clarify one thing initially, is that Chapter fourteen point fifteen basically relates to the city, city's rights of ways, streets, storm drain conveyances, and the hard system, the hard infrastructure. What this ordinance does in addition is it makes it illegal to essentially discharge, and it is already illegal pursuant to federal law, but it clarifies in our code that if you are essentially camping in a waterway and you're dumping human waste into the waterway, that is a crime, and that is something that is, it constitutes a public nuisance. It, it is environmental pollution of really some of the worst sorts in terms of the, of the material that we are tested for by the Regional Board, and the human fecal content, the bacteria, the phosphorus, all of that is a direct result of human intervention, and that is something that we need to be able to interject into and, and prevent. And right now, what the city is doing is it is posting and clearing encampments on a health and safety issue essentially solely. There have been encampments that block the public right-of-way, so the pedestrians, in addition to being concerned about, you know, walking with their children past encampments, sometimes they can't walk past encampments because they take up the entire sidewalk. Those were clear cases where health and safety issues, the Americans with Disability Act and other related statutes called for those encampments to be cleared. We can post and we can clear those. Under the ordinance, we would be able to post and clear those. What this does is it means that the rest of the encampments that are. that are on city property, I mean, as the, as the packet photographs show, we've had physical occupation not only of the city's rights of way, but of real property that is waiting to be used for road improvements, fairly significant encampments, and then also property that is a historic resource for the city. The Pink House was essentially occupied by, by transients and was put in a very precarious position, even more so than it was before, as a, as a very aged structure. They, they were not kind to that structure either. It's also a wooden structure. So, in addition to the over 30 fires that have been caused in the last three and a half to four years by unhoused persons in the waterways and in other areas that are adjacent to riparian areas that are, and Chaparral, which is, you know, very fuel-worthy, those are, those are areas that are a major concern environmentally. So, those are things that we can do, but we cannot, we cannot do anything above and beyond that if we cannot offer a shelter bed. That was then. Now, the city is able to enforce and essentially take back the public rights of way for the use of the, of the citizens, even if shelter is not available. And it may not be an issue because very often, the unhoused do not want shelter. One of the things that we are hoping is that with this prohibition against encampments in the, in, in public property, that they will be encouraged to seek shelter and seek services and take advantage of those shelters and, and services when they are available. So, that is the before and after picture.
Well, yeah, it makes it more of an incentive that you no longer have the right to actually be on public property because now we, we have, because there's no, you don't want to go to a shelter bed, right? We can now say, "Now you can't be on public property," which, you know, I mean, it's, it's a terrible situation because obviously, we don't, you know, we don't want to see anyone that's homeless at all. I mean, but that's not, you know, some people just don't want to have a place, you know. They don't want to have to follow rules. They want to be able to do what they want to do. And unfortunately, it does affect our entire collective community. So, anyway, did you have any further questions, Councilmember?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Deputy Mayor.
And Helen, I just want to confirm, I think we all know our sheriffs and the teams that help them try to do a really good job of, of directing people to services if they choose to partake of them. All of that would still continue like it does now?
Yes, there are a number of, of services and resources that, when law enforcement, code enforcement, and others come across persons who are unhoused, are able to offer. And I think Michelle has a summary of, the city manager has a summary of, of some of those resources, but very often, those, you know, in the past have been declined because the, the freedom of living according to their own rules and, it, it was just more, more attractive. What we're hoping is that those services and, and resources are, that people actually avail themselves of those resources much more so than they have been in the past.
Right, okay. Thanks for clarifying.
And we do invest in that program too, by the way. And maybe Michelle, now you're having me say it, Helen, City Manager Bender could maybe clarify what those, what those services are and how much we spend.
Yes, absolutely. We, we do have the COPS unit that does outreach in collaboration with the county social worker, Yolanda. They go out on a, a bi-monthly basis with public health nurses to offer services as well. The outreach team visits the encampments' RVs to provide services if, if accepted. The assistance ranges from offering shelter, medical assistance, enrollment in welfare programs, as well as case management. All unsheltered individuals are offered resources and provided assistance as requested. So, some of, some of the folks that are contacted accept that assistance and schedule follow-up appointments with the social worker while others decline those resources. Outside of the bi-monthly outreach efforts, the county social worker conducts one-on-one appointments with unsheltered individuals to support them with goals ranging from obtaining an ID card to enrolling in SNAP benefits to obtaining housing. Deputies assist with these appointments as needed on a case-by-case basis, depending on the client. People assisting the homeless or PATH is a nonprofit providing ongoing outreach throughout the city with a dedicated social worker, Monica, who, we actually got a really heartwarming update today that one of the folks in our community that was previously unhoused got an airplane ticket purchased by PATH, got the help he needed, and we got sent a picture today of him in the airport on his way to being reunited with his family in Idaho. So, there are definitely some, some great successes that come out of these programs. We also invest in the Alliance for Regional Solutions. The, the R's network provides 156 shelter beds for individuals seeking temporary shelter. We invest a substantial amount in that program. It's $120,000 a year, which I believe is a significant investment even in comparison to, to our neighbors in North County. We also have 12 permanent supportive housing units available to transition age use within, youth within the city of San Marcos, which is a great resource. One Safe Place is a wonderful resource for the North County that is here in San Marcos.
And literally, everything's there.
Everything, several
Everything's there.
Yeah, focused on supporting victims of domestic or sexual abuse, ranging from safe housing to trauma treatment. And as the mayor mentioned, it is a one-stop shop to try to, to help people in those situations. And we also have CASA or Casa de Empora that provides permanent housing and behavioral health resources for children and young adults in the foster care system and transitioning out of foster care. So, we, we do provide some resources in the community to assist the unsheltered.
Any questions over here? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
We've seen the, the great work that the deputies have done with some of our, our homeless, and, and I, I really think a lot of it is they've mastered the art of discussing what these individuals' services that are available, simply because we don't have a shelter. So, if you're in Escondido, Vista, Carlsbad, Oceanside, where that is an option, it's not an option here. So, it's really interesting when they talk to the, to the individuals, and they really want help. They just don't know where it is. So, you've very well described all the different services that are available, and the deputies really extending themselves out to make that happen. I think that's fantastic, and I think that will continue, and I hope it will continue to be, the mantra for how we approach this. And there are some that will simply just turn it down. Well, that's a different methodology as far as addressing that issue. But a concern I have is some of the services or potential service providers in our city that might then invite people onto their private property. And it could be any, any number of providers who would allow that to happen. They need to be extremely careful that, once they're on their property, if they've invited them on there, and then they are not careful about where the gray or black water is going, the liability would extend to that property owner in addition to the person who is making the discharge. So, I, I just, I hope our code enforcement people are being a good resource for those property owners if we get to see that, that that is an issue, that they let them know that you're fine doing that. It's your property as you like. However, as much as, you know, your family members coming in from another part of the country and parking in your driveway and then discharging into the, into the sewer system, you're the property owner, and they're an invited guest. So, I don't, I don't want that to be an issue, but I think we, we also have some sense of duty to make sure that those property owners are aware of that if it comes to that point.
Well, and, and just to that point, currently, and maybe Helen could correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if, if someone is on our street and they pump something into the sewer, or not the sewer, but the stormwater, it actually comes back to us if there's a discharge, correct? We're the responsible party.
It's a violation of our National Pollution Elimination Permit, so NPDES.
So, it actually, though, it comes back, we would be the, the responsible party, so
We could, we, we can be fined.
Yeah.
What generally they want us to do is they want us to, to enforce, and they wish us good luck with that.
Yeah.
So, we are, we are essentially the enforcement agency locally, unless the regional board does get involved. But to that point, you know, whether it's a residential homeowner who is discharging black water or gray water into the storm drain system, that is illegal under 14 Point 15. We would be, and the stormwater program folks are very nice but very firm about those sorts of things, and that would be a violation as well as any, any person who is living in their RV and, and discharging that. And it's, it's pretty hideous stuff that they're putting down into the storm drain system and power washing, so that it, you know, trying to get rid of all of the traces of it into the storm drain system. And it's a, it's a lot. So, whatever we can do to reduce that, whether it be from, you know, people who are associated with a residential, a single-family residential unit, or an RV that just happens to be passing through, we, we, we can't have that going on.
No. And, I mean, the pictures with the trash and everything left there at our parks, I mean, there was that one cul-de-sac over on Val Prada where they just constantly are leaving a slew. I mean, I've gotten numerous calls from a resident over there and emails and text messages, and I mean, I just feel sorry that there's not, I mean, now we'll be able to do more, but there really wasn't too much that we could do, being that was within our right-of-way. So, I'm glad that this, that the, that the ruling came out, and we actually have now better ways to enforce it, because I certainly don't want San Marcos to look like San Francisco or Los Angeles. That's never been my goal. I mean, the quality of life there is not, not good at all whatsoever.
San Francisco has expressed relief at the opinion also, and they are going to be undertaking additional measures, because they have a tendency to impact lower-income neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
And as we, we see in, in some of our areas, people are, they enjoy being adjacent to a waterway, but there's a downside that comes with that if, if there's a lot of campers that are taking advantage of it as well. But, yes, I think many cities will be taking a look at what additional measures they may have at their disposal.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Just one more question. So, Helen, I would, I would guess that if this is not approved, that we could be more liable with some of the agencies possibly because we didn't make a good-faith effort to try to deal with some of the issues. Is that
Well, in terms of the environmental matters, we, we do try, but quite frankly, the bigger the encampments get, the more expensive and more dangerous it is for people who are working. They already have to don, tie vex suits and, and gloves and whatnot, but it gets, the longer people live in an encampment area, the, the more hazardous material and bio, biologically interesting material is, is gathered, and it, it makes it much more dangerous and much more expensive to remediate. So, this will allow us to hopefully get that under control and maintain it under control. But yes, bottom line is, it will help us to be in better compliance with our environmental permits, and I think, you know, that can't help but be a good thing.
Yeah. Okay, we, we have some public speakers. Yes, Councilmember.
Follow-up question with respect to the resources that are available. One of the things that I see all the time is not random individuals, but literally families with kids that end up really unhoused, living out of their car and sleeping out of their car, and that's something that's happening, and it's happening here in our city, and these are residents that have been living in our city. I know it also happens with our students that are living out of their cars. So, one of the concerns that I have, if, if somebody can tell me, when we do, when law enforcement or city individuals encounter a car with an entire family that is parked in one of our public streets, then how is that handled? What's being offered?
When, when we do encounter people that are parked in the city overnight, this is when I believe our COPS deputies and Yolanda or Monica get involved. Anecdotally, my understanding from interacting with the sheriff's deputies is when we have families like this that are unhoused, they, they're usually very receptive to the assistance that's offered. And so, that's where some of these additional resources that we do have in the city really bear fruit because people with children in cars want help, and they want to be referred to resources. So, the goal is definitely to make contact, determine what the obstacle to finding housing is, what kind of resources would be helpful to that family, and try to connect them on a path to finding housing. I, I think that those situations and interactions usually do end up being quite successful. It's when we encounter people that are perhaps engaged in criminal activity after hours that sometimes those resources aren't necessarily as welcomed.
I think I have a, a follow-up question to that, and it really is, because it seems to me every time, or maybe it's just me, every time I encounter an individual or a family that is about to be unhoused or in, unhoused, I keep being told that there are all these resources, and then I just don't know where they're at. So, typically, if we have somebody, a family with kids, they usually need immediate funds to pay for a hotel so they are not out on the street, and I can't seem to find any of these resources. So, we're usually paying out of pocket to help somebody spend a couple of nights. So, where are these resources? That's what I keep wondering. And why are they not coming up when, at least the families that I come in contact with, they just don't pan out? And so, that is my concern, that, that although we do have resources, I'm just not sure. My fear is that they're so limited, or they're just so exclusive, and they're not being utilized to help these people, and they're visible, right? Some of them, I understand, are, are hidden, but a lot of these families, a lot of these individuals are visible to all of us. And so, that's why I continue to ask the question, where are the resources? And how come they're not getting to, then, these families that are out, literally out on the street? And then my other question is, so, if somebody is living out of their car, and that's the, the need that they have at that moment, or out of their RV, and if we don't want them parked on our streets, then where do they go? Where, what are the options? Because then my question is, are we just pushing these cars, these RVs, are we pushing them to Encinitas? Are we pushing them to Escondido? Where are they going? So, do we have this magic place that they can go to? That's what I'm thinking about.
Councilmember Nunez, just an update. We, we have, you know, our expert Sylvia here tonight, and so she's, she's providing me with additional information that I think is very helpful to the first part of your question. The school district actually has staff dedicated to any families in the district that is, that are facing a loss of housing. They have access to the federal McKinney Vento Funds, so I think that's a, that's a great resource that, that we should probably keep in mind if we're referring families with, with children in the district. So, I just wanted to, to add that, because I, I know how closely you work with SME.
Well, I, I was, I was going to interject. So, I've, I've actually had people in the past, and I, and I spoke to Greg over at Interfaith about this specifically. He said that they, a lot of times, will provide like a month's rent or something like that from key from keeping people from becoming homeless. You know, I mean, one of the things that I think our city has done so well in is that we have the affordable housing, which, you know, 3,300 units, 10% of our total housing stock, more than any other city in the entire county, percentage-wise, is, you know, is something that has really helped us and helped our families, you know, because if they can get on that list and they can actually get that, and, you know, I've had people say, "Well, I'm number 20 on the list," but then a unit opened up and then I ended up, or not 20, but like 200 or something like that, "Oh, if something opened up and I could move right away, and so I actually was able to get a unit." So that sometimes happens, too. But over at Interfaith, he did tell me specifically that they definitely will help out with rent for folks when they have issues like that, and they need immediate help to keep them from becoming homeless in the first place. Hopefully, that's helpful. Any other questions? Otherwise, we should get to the speakers. Do, you know, okay, all right. Any other questions immediately? No? Okay. Kathy Steele will be up first, followed by Justin Gans, followed by Tracy Gans.
Metamare, I think Kathy just wanted her statement read into the record.
I'm sorry?
Kathy, I think she just wanted her statement.
Oh, I was wondering what this was. Sorry, I didn't see, her name was on it. Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Councilmembers. I've read the proposed ordinance regarding encampments on city property and understand the dilemma the city has. We all want to feel safe in our city, and criminal activity should be handled appropriately. However, please keep in mind that the city should not treat poverty as a crime. I have heard from the podium that we have adequate low-income housing, but I've also heard from community members that is not the case. What happened at Villa Serena is a case in point. Until the city has a comprehensive housing plan that does not include sending homeless people elsewhere, I ask that you put this ordinance on hold until you do. San Marcos is a good place to live, but only for some people. Please do the humane thing and put this encampment ban on hold and work to develop a housing plan that works for all San Marcos residents. Thank you, Kathy Steele. So Villa Serena actually is, I just, that is us actually helping more housing units to be built, so I wanted to clarify that. Okay, so Justin Gans is up next, followed by Tracy Gans, and then after Tracy, it will be Emily Mohammed. Justin, Tracy, and then Emily.
So I am here to speak on this proposed ordinance, which permits the criminalization of encampments on public property regardless of an individual's personal circumstances, including being unhoused. I'd like to make one correction. Grants passed overturned Martin versus Boise, it did not expand it. This ordinance is based on a very new precedent, and is not something that our cities should pursue. Mayor Jones, your talk about protecting stormwater drains is just a straw man argument. You can avoid the whole problem by ensuring that people have access to shelter before you criminalize their actions. And Deputy Mayor Jenkins, we can avoid liability for waste by actually doing something to prevent homelessness in the first place. If homelessness is a real concern of the city council, we would be expanding affordable housing, something that myself and many others have called for and been repeatedly ignored. And as Councilmember Musgrove's mentioned, we don't even have a homeless shelter in San Marcos. Whether or not people can violate public property is not the issue in question. The question is whether or not we should criminalize people for circumstances outside of their control. Under the Supreme Court's ruling in Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson, localities are not able to arrest, ticket, and find people for sleeping outdoors on public property, even if leaders have failed to produce enough affordable housing or shelter for everyone in the community who needs it. This decision sets a dangerous precedent that causes undue harm to people experiencing homelessness and gives free rein to local officials who prefer pointless and expensive arrests and imprisonment rather than real solutions. According to Scout Kadovich, a staff attorney with the ACLU, there is no punishment that fits the crime of being forced to sleep outside. Arresting and finding unhoused people for simply existing is a profound betrayal of the respect for human dignity that the Supreme Court has long recognized is at the core of the Eighth Amendment's protections. Instead of saddling people with fines, jail time, and criminal records that only perpetuate cycles of homelessness, cities should focus on proven solutions like affordable housing, accessible involuntary services, and eviction protections. The Eighth Amendment's broad language prohibiting the infliction of cruel and unusual punishments was understood at the time of its adoption to the U.S. Constitution to embody the principle of proportionality, meaning that a punishment must be appropriately tailored to the seriousness of the offense. In the Grants Pass, where the offense involves sleeping outside where no alternative shelter exists, any punishment, including the fines and jail time imposed by Grants Pass, is plainly disproportionate. This twisted logic ignores the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on disproportionate punishment, which the Supreme Court has used to bar making it as a crime to be addicted to drugs and to ban the death penalty for children and people with intellectual disabilities, for example. Should a council member vote to pass this ordinance, you will go on record as having no respect for basic human rights. I pray you all don't find yourself unhoused someday. I beg you not to pass this cruel amendment to our municipal code.
Just to clarify, it was the lower court that expanded, the lower court in Grants Pass expanded Martin v. Boise, and then on review by the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court then reversed. So just to clarify, because it seems like there was a misunderstanding of the legal background.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak. We actually have 3,000 housing units that are in the pipeline to be built, and 464 of those are deed-restricted affordable units, just as a clarification of what we're doing, which is actually more than 10% of what is in the pipeline right now. Okay, so Tracy Gans, followed by Emily Mohammed, followed by Angelina.
Good evening, Mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't see you were there. My apologies. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I'll be very brief. I just urge you not to pass this. We are talking about human beings, people that are in need. We need to treat them with compassion and with decency. With no place to go, it is deeply troubling to think that without any other options for people, you would like to see them arrested. We need to treat all with respect and all with dignity. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Emily Mohammed, followed by Angelina, and then Warshon Ismail.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and fellow city councilmembers. I come before you today to address the issue of Resolution 6. I also want to acknowledge that we are on the Kumeya and Palco Micho people. However, I came here to address the resolution that prohibits camping on streets and city property. In other words, this criminalizes houseless folks, people that have no place to go. Each year, 4.2 million adults and youth experience homelessness. Earlier, you commented on having a high-quality life was of your highest importance, and you also said, in your own words, that a lot of families are having a tough time financially. We can all agree that there, we are in a hard time financially in this country, so we do need to support each other. I beg you to not pass this resolution. I ask you to first consider building a shelter. As Ed Musgrove said, we don't have one. I think that's something that we can work on. Just delay this. There is no need for this. We do not need to criminalize houseless populations. They're humans. They're families. I mean, 1 in 3 foster kids are homeless. This also affects LGBTQ2+ individuals at a higher rate, double the rate. So just please delay passing this, I ask you. Consider it, think about it, do not make a decision tonight. Hear your constituents and understand that this is a violation of human rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next up is Angelina, followed by Warshon, followed by Carol Gendel.
Before I talk about how this land is used, I will recognize that this is the rightful home of the Kumeya peoples of Southern California and Mexico. Criminalizing homelessness, that's what this agendized item really means. How is it feasible to waste tax dollars by prosecuting individuals for multiple violations instead of expanding affordable housing and shelters? Unhoused people have enough stress with the physical and mental conditions faced with poverty. Many unhoused people in Southern California are immigrants, and they are not provided with the right tools that asylum seekers should receive by the city or state. Assistance referrals can only do so much when not on city soil. It is important to note that shelters, particularly women's shelters, across the country may have abuse allegations against them, a risk that someone may not be willing to take. Shelters do not provide a long-term solution that drug rehabilitation and welfare could help solve. The documents attached with the item seem to highlight the safety of housed individuals and property owners, especially with their health and safety, but the health and safety of the unhoused seems to have little regard. We cannot demonize the unhoused. This item targets mothers, students, employees, and friends. A mass variety of people experience houselessness for a variety of reasons. Back to the students, though. The language of the item, specifically the word "encampment," and how it is determined struck out to me. Of course, tents and parked cars, homing people outdoors are also encampments, but so are student encampments on CSU and UC campuses, as they are public property. I cannot help but wonder if this bill will also strike down efforts of student encampments as well as targeting the unhoused, similar to what local governments in the Los Angeles region are doing. You, Mayor Jones, have been pictured with the mayor of Coronado on various occasions, who has infamously shipped off the homeless population on the island to downtown San Diego, essentially leaving the unhoused to be arrested or relocated yet again. This is not something we want for San Marcos. They are people, not an infestation. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelina. Next up, Warshon, followed by Carol Gendel, and then Bryant Rombach.
And just a clarification, the ordinance addresses public property, which is defined as property owned or controlled by the city, as the Assistant City Attorney said earlier. Not state property.
Warshon, welcome.
This ordinance, in essence, will criminalize and further stigmatize unhoused people. Criminalizing homelessness is a cruel policy. By definition, issuing misdemeanors, citations, fines, and the threat of incarceration are all forms of criminalization, that is opted to punish people rather than addressing a larger systemic issue. Homelessness is pervasive and multifaceted issue that is exasperated by government legislations and the cycle of poverty. We cannot resort to criminalizing the vulnerable members in our community. We are your constituents regardless of housing status. Unhoused people are deserving of dignity and respect, and a sustainable solution to ensure their well-being as well. Not an afterthought prioritized over aesthetically pleasing sceneries. These are human beings, not objects, that can be displaced and disposed at your leisure. Rather than wasting money on temporary solutions, we can allocate resources and our efforts into making more affordable housing, providing funds for emergency shelters and services. Reducing the rates of disparity will be more effective in spearheading homelessness. It goes without saying that unhoused people are at intersections. More often than not, they're a part of marginalized communities disproportionately, communities of color, communities of lower socioeconomic status, people that are suffering from substance abuse and drug abuse, and/or suffering from mental illness, and how that ties in with mass incarceration and limited access to already scarce resources once that criminal label is branded on the individual. Displacing unhoused people will not only, will not solve the issue of homelessness. They have nowhere to go, and I urge you to vote against Agenda Item 6. And if I may ask a question, does giving citations to unhoused people perpetuate poverty, which is the main contributor to homelessness? Jules, if you can answer that. I'm not sure if this is dialogue or...
This is a public comment period, not typically a question and answer.
Okay. I respect that. Just giving citations to unhoused people or any form of criminalization, how does that help homelessness? That does exasperate poverty, and isn't that what we're trying to help solve? So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Carol Gendel, followed by Bryant Rombach, and then Angelica, Shosky, I'm sorry.
Mayor, city councilmembers, thank you for giving me a chance to speak, although I must confess, pretty much everything that I was going to say has been said and quite well tonight. I'm here to speak for the homeless. I actually have a dog in this fight. I live around the corner from one of the sets of pictures that was taken on El Norte and Woodland Parkway. And the person who was camping there, it did not extend onto the sidewalk. I don't think, I never know who it was or whether that person was there. I know some people feel threatened by the very thought of someone who's homeless being nearby. Maybe it's because they're afraid that they could also be homeless, and we don't know how we're going to respond to that. I would like to think that we can do better. I understand all the arguments that were put forward tonight, protecting our waterways, protecting our communities, all of those are important. But I also think that we must consider, as the young lady who said before, these are human beings, and if we find them, where are they going to get the money? They're homeless, they don't have, they're mostly living on the edge as it is. We need to figure out a better way. And as my city councillor said, we don't have a shelter in San Marcos. Where are these people to go? Escondido? Escondido is trying to get rid of Interfaith Community Services. Vista, you know, is it fair to shove our problem, and we do have homeless in the community, onto someone else? We need to figure out a way of resolving this problem, and I would like to suggest, I'm in favor of the tax increase that we're putting on the ballot in the fall. I would like to see some of that money go toward building a shelter here in San Marcos so that we actually can take care of people who do need that help, assuming that they, and make sure that they are getting what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next up, Bryant Rombach, followed by Angelica, oh geez. My apologies, I forgot to keep my gla-- I think it's Sastig, and then followed by Georgina Nagera.
Okay, thank you so much. This is my last time. I know this isn't an interaction, but it was 2:35, I think I heard. Was that right? Yeah. So obviously, you know, one thing that I've noticed, and I've actually had this discussion with other people, you know, we live in a, you know, climactic wonderland a little bit, okay? In some other words, maybe homeless would migrate, let's, we're talking about the 80s or 90s or whatnot, to, you know, areas such as this. Those times have probably changed. And I appreciate all the speakers tonight. You guys all did great. When I think about this Grants Pass thing, and what I can tell you is, last week, it was actually on at Escondido. And I was kind of shocked at a couple of the photos that I saw. There was actually, just imagine a bunch of reeds with a person who had set up a tarp and had a cot and a little dresser. It was, it was a person who I said in my mind, they were trying to live an orderly life. I would refer to them as newly homeless. Now, that word "encampment," how I think the young lady had said, I also kind of find that interesting, because simply, you know, you got the RV people, which I agree that that's an issue, that's disgusting, I don't know what's, if you need to have, like, on a job site as an electrician, we have the toilet guy who comes in and, you know, with big vacuum, I don't know if one of those machines is available. Then you got the people that are living out of their homes. Then you got the people that are, let's just say, camping. Then you got the other, the homeless, that they're doing exactly what it is that they want to do, you know? And I understand, you know, image is everything, let's just say, you know, we don't want to live in a society where, you know, it's, you know, in our face, even though I am not never wanting anything to not be in my face, because that's a big problem that I see. In other words, I would love to see everyone have a flushing toilet and enough clean water to drink and clean air, you know, a stable currency, okay? You know, we have to realize that when we go from 2:35, there's underlying problems that you people are not going to be able to solve, okay? So when we have people that come in here and are, you know, they're leaving after this, and then they're emergency personnel responders, and then they're having to, you know, and I appreciate what the cops have done to educate these people on these situations, the homeless that they interact with, options available. Then, you know, your resources are being consumed dealing with these types of things. Then all of a sudden, you need to have more, you know, a bigger government at that. I am not a big government guy. That's half the problem, is that we don't have people in here representing themselves. It's now generational. It's, it's now generational. You know, I mean, I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, I'm just saying, the homeless industrial complex exists. Thank you.
Bryant. Next up, Angelica, followed by Georgina. Sorry, Angelica. I'm trying. I've been a little under the weather.
Thank you. Angelica Santiago. I wasn't planning on speaking on behalf of this topic, but it's very personal. My family has been affected by homeless, right? It's a huge issue. And I feel, and I agree, this is not the best solution. This is criminalizing and making things even harder on those individuals trying to get a housing or trying to do better, right? Yeah, it's definitely hard. You know, people have fees, and then you're adding more fees and fees. It's definitely not okay. Sorry, I'm emotional.
Thank you for your feedback. Georgina? Good evening to all the council.
Mi nombre es Georgina Najera y vivo aquí en San Marcos.
I am Georgina Najera, and I am a resident in San Marcos.
Soy voluntaria de Universidad Popular.
I am a volunteer for Universidad Popular.
Estoy aquí para decirles que no estoy de acuerdo con esta, con esta resolución que quieren tomar.
I'm here to tell you that I'm not pro this resolution that you want to take.
Creo que las veces anteriores, anteriores que he estado aquí...
I believe that the prior times that I've been here...
He ha hablado de un problema muy grande que hay.
I have spoken of a great problem that we have.
Como es la vivienda.
As is home.
Yo ahorita tengo vivienda.
Right now, I do have a home.
No sé mañana. Puedo estar en la calle.
I don't know tomorrow. I could be out in the streets.
Pues muchas de esas personas que están en la calle, en esa condición, es...
Many of those homeless people that are under that condition...
Es porque perdieron sus viviendas.
Is because they lost their home.
Ustedes no han tenido la oportunidad de hablar con ellos.
You haven't had the opportunity in speaking with them.
Cuáles son sus preocupaciones, cuáles son sus miedos, cuáles son sus necesidades.
What are their concerns, what are their preoccupations, and what are their needs?
Son personas como nosotros.
They're people just like we are.
Y también tienen derechos.
And they do have rights as well.
De ser tratados como tal.
That should be treated just as.
Yo he tenido enfrente de mí personas de la tercera edad.
I have had senior people in front of me...
Que no tienen pensión.
That have no pensions.
No pudieron pagar su vivienda.
They couldn't pay their home.
Y tuvieron que estar, tienen que estar en la calle durmiendo.
And they have to be out in the streets sleeping.
No entiendo cuál es el problema. De la contaminación?
I don't understand what the problem is, contamination?
La contaminación la hacemos todos.
Contamination, we all do it.
Nosotros somos cómplices de esa contaminación.
We are also the cause of that.
Que ya existe.
And it's existing.
No fueron, no son ellos quienes la están haciendo.
It's not them that are doing it.
Por eso es que yo no estoy de acuerdo con esto, que los traten como criminales.
This is why I don't agree with this, that they're being treated as criminals.
Porque si ellos son criminales, también nosotros los somos.
Because if they are treated as criminals, so are we.
No sé cuál es la diferencia, porque tenemos una ropa limpia y ellos una ropa sucia, o duermen con cobijas sucias.
I don't know what the difference is, just because they have dirty clothes and we have clean ones?
Porque eso...
Or they have dirty sheets and we have nice ones?
Porque eso les ha tocado hoy en día.
Because that is what they have now, today.
Y hay que recordar que la tierra es de todos.
And let's remember that the earth belongs to everyone. It's not just to a group.
Hay familias que no tienen ni qué comer.
There's families that don't even have anything to eat.
Niños.
Children.
Que duele ver esos niños sin hogar.
It hurts to see these children without homes.
Porque tienen madres, sus madres, hay madres solteras que no pueden sostener a una familia sola.
Because there's mothers, and there's single mothers, that cannot sustain their own family.
Porque entre más nos van poniendo barreras a los más pobres.
There's more barriers that are being put to the poor.
Y ese es el mismo sistema que nos está poniendo esto.
And this is the same system that this is doing to us.
Donde están los albergues, están lejos de la ciudad de San Marcos, porque San Marcos no está ni preparado con albergues, ni para una emergencia, un lugar para emergencia.
Where are the places where these people can go? Because we don't have such places in San Marcos. Even if there's an emergency, where do they go?
Eso lo sabemos.
We know that.
Gracias por aprobar los, para el aumento del penny de los taxis.
Thank you for approving the taxes, the one penny.
Eso también ayudaría para ayudar a esas personas.
That would also help to help these people.
Porque lo necesitan.
Because they are in need of it.
Yo sí he escuchado sus miedos de algunas personas. Cuáles son sus miedos para llegar a un albergue?
I have heard the fears of these people to find a place of protection.
No les dan seguimiento como ahorita estoy escuchando. Ellos me dicen que no dan seguimiento.
There's no follow-ups, just as we're hearing now. They tell me there's no follow-ups.
Ellos tienen derecho a la salud.
They have a right for health.
Tienen derecho a tener un plato de comida.
They have a right to have a plate of food.
Y a una vivienda.
And a home.
Espero que ustedes tomen conciencia de eso, que ellos son parte de nosotros, y que también ellos en su momento trabajaron y también aportaron al país.
I hope that you make conscious of it.
Al estado.
And that you remember that they also gave to this country by their work or whatever they did.
Y a nuestra ciudad.
And to our city.
Yo he estado con ellos hablando. Me gustaría que alguno de ustedes se acercara a esas personas.
I have spoken with them. I wish that one of you or some of you would come and speak with them.
Y se dieran cuenta que ellos no son criminales.
And that you would see that they're not criminals.
Fueron personas como nosotros.
They were people just like we are.
Ahora los miran como bichos raros.
Now they're just pests.
Pero les recuerdo que son personas también.
Would I remind you that these are people as well?
Gracias.
Thank you. Estamos. Thank you, Georgina. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah. First, thank you staff for the presentation, I appreciate it. I'm supportive of the ordinance. I know this is an emotional issue, and I know it's just a deeply concerning issue all the way around, from the humanity piece of it, to the environmental piece to it, to the public health standpoint, to the threat of fire. It's certainly complex, and it's, it's a tough one. But I will say that, as a city and a community, I think we've done a lot already with our affordable housing programs and all the other programs that were mentioned earlier. I do think that we should continue to be proactive and look for ways to do even more as we go forward into the future. But in the meantime, we're faced with an environmental disaster that's taking place right in front of our eyes. We talked a lot about the storm drains tonight. Prior to being on the city council, I was on the Vallecitos Water District Board of Directors for eight years, and we were responsible for the city's sewer system. And the sewer system, you know, we, I couldn't tell you how many times we took tarps out of it, chairs. One time we had a whole couch that somebody put in there. And how that impacts the environment is it clogs the system, and it causes the sewer system to overflow and fail. And that just is a, just an environmental disaster beyond belief. And we saw it, and it was fairly regular occurrences when I was on the water district. Never mind everything that was already talked about with regards to our stormwater system, and ultimately, all that water goes into our, our waterways and ultimately out to the ocean. And I don't see how anybody could even call themselves an environmentalist if they didn't support some sort of change at this level, because it is, it's truly a disaster, and it's also a public health crisis. And, you know, I've had a lot of feedback from members of the community, not so much about safety, but about accessibility. One resident who is wheelchair-bound couldn't go down the sidewalk because there were tarps and furniture and everything else blocking the sidewalk. So they were forced in their wheelchair to go out onto a busy street to get to where they were trying to get to. That's not right for them either, and that's a humanity concern as well. And the other, the other feedback I've heard a lot of is, and why, one of the key reasons why I support this ordinance is because there's, at least, off the top of my head, I can think of at least two, but there's probably more of our elementary schools that border our public parks. And I have heard feedback from parents and from teachers about these encampments coming up on the fence lines of our, of our elementary schools. And because they're technically not on the school campus, they're on the park right next door. And, and that's, that's a concern for, for parents in our community. And so, for all the same reasons, not necessarily just about safety, but the public health aspect is what comes up the most. And so for those reasons, I definitely am committed, and I encourage all of us to try to do more as we go forward, to help those who, who are in need in our community. But we also need to, it's just as, as important that we focus on our environment and, and public health, and then of course, the, you know, the fire risk is, is something that we've heard about in the news, you know, throughout the region and throughout the entire country. And that, you know, that's something that, that puts everybody at risk. And we just, you know, we need to, we need to tackle the problem comprehensively, and we need to tackle it at the same time.
Thank you, council member. Yes, council member.
I just want to make sure we're very clear on something, including with the Supreme Court's Grant Pass decision. It's not the issue of homelessness we're discussing here tonight, we're talking about conduct, individual conduct. I have a niece who is homeless, who has put my family through hell. I haven't seen her in quite a few years, but when she was arrested and I was contacted when I was on the sheriff's department and asked, "What should we do with your niece?" I told him, "Do whatever you would normally do with anyone else, she gets no special treatment." But it was her conduct, not because she was couch surfing or where she was insofar as her lifestyle, it was her conduct. So the speakers that are coming up here, we're trying to make, there is a correlation, and we can't deny there's a correlation between the homeless and the activities, but we need to make sure we clearly define what we're talking about is conduct, it's activities. I firmly believe the sheriff will continue, and our code enforcement will continue to address what services we can provide for those who need it, but we're looking for compliance with your conduct. And so those, this ordinance, if we pass it, applies not just to the people you see living in an RV or pitching a tent in a park, it's every one of us, including all of us sitting up here. It's about our conduct, their conduct. What are we going to do as a society to ensure that everyone is safe in their environment? And that's what we're really talking about. So I think we need to make that clear distinction, that it is the conduct we're addressing. Thank you.
Councilman, or Deputy Mayor?
Yes. I just want to share, you might not have seen it yet, Rebecca, but we received an email from a resident who's watching the meeting. And she asked me to read it here. Dear Phil, my name is Cheryl Brown, we live on Valparaiso Road. We are the family that Mayor Jones made mention of regarding this situation.
I didn't name them.
I know. Well, she's naming her, she's naming herself. We are in no way unsympathetic to the unhoused, but we have faced the dealing of drugs, building a condo at the end of our cul-de-sac to the point that we are unable to walk our dogs, riding our bikes with our children, and even had our nine-year-old friends decline on having a playdate at our house because of this situation. I wish I had known earlier of this meeting, as I would have been there and made a comment. If I can be brought into comment virtually, I would love to. Well, not necessary.
This is working.
Yeah. Again, we are not unsympathetic. We have provided food, bedding, and other amenities, but these individuals continue to trash our cul-de-sac, intimidate walkers, and prevent us from enjoying our neighborhood. If there is any way that I can add my comment, I would love to do so in a manner that is understanding and compassionate, but also respecting those that live in our city. Sincerely, Cheryl Brown. So, I'm just reading that on behalf of our resident. Again, she was watching the meeting and wanted to make sure that people in the audience know of their situation also. So I think I'll echo on what somebody said down this way, I'm not sure who it was. But I think our sheriffs and, and our staff are trying to help as much as they can, as much as people are willing to accept the help. Hopefully that continues. Hopefully, maybe if this passes, somehow there's other measures that come up that can encourage to help people, because I don't think any of us want to see this, and we want to help where possible. So I just want to share those comments, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I also, before I start my, my comments, we did receive a public comment prior to today's, or the start of the meeting, and I also want to put this on the record to make sure that it's, that it's part of the hearing. And this is from Alliance San Diego, one of our countywide stakeholders. So this is addressed to the Mayor Jones and council members. I am writing on behalf of Alliance San Diego. Our mission is to create an inclusive democracy, and we mobilize voters and constituencies across San Diego County, including in San Marcos. We are registering our opposition to Item Six in tonight's agenda. The proposed encampment ordinance by the city of San Marcos violates human rights. Housing is a universal right. In 1948, the United States and other nations signed the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which recognizes the human dignity of all people and calls upon nations to protect basic fundamental human rights. These rights include the right to adequate housing. The proposed encampment ordinance ignores the severe shortage of both temporary shelter and permanent, and permanent supportive housing. In our region, on any given day, only a handful of shelter beds become available when there are thousands of people who need them. The ratio of available shelter spots to demand for them may be one to 100, which is a devastating gap that leaves unhoused men, women, and children with few options. According to the latest estimates from the California Department of Education, there are over 19,000 homeless students in San Diego County, including in North County districts. We need to focus on solutions to help vulnerable populations, including children, seniors, immigrants, people with disabilities, and people, secure housing, and other resources they need. Criminalization and unjust enforcement from the city of San Marcos's proposed encampment ordinance will punish residents further away from outreach and services. Meanwhile, the number of people falling into homelessness far outpaces the number of unhoused individuals who are rehoused. We call upon the city council of San Marcos to protect human rights and uphold the dignity of all residents regardless of their housing status by rejecting the proposed encampment ordinance. And this is from Alliance San Diego.
Thank you. Did you have comments of your own, or?
Are we doing comments?
Yeah, yeah.
Or closing out, or?
Yeah, you can say whatever you'd like.
Then I'll go ahead and do my comments. I, I cannot support the criminalization of our unhoused individuals. I think I agree with, with our speakers in the sense that our unhoused individuals, although some of them may be criminals, that's not what, that's not what we're seeing. It's not what I see. What I see... What I see, as I mentioned earlier, are entire families, so single moms, um, with kids of all ages. And it's not happening outside of our city, it's happening in our city, and it continues to happen, and I believe it's going to continue to happen. And so what I would like to see is more of a focus on really bringing in more resources for, um, these individuals, not only to help the ones that are currently unhoused, but to keep, um, entire families from becoming unhoused. And that's where I would like to see our focus. I think, um, making the possibility of criminalizing these individuals and families, I don't think will help their situation. I don't think ultimately will help to end homelessness, and for those reasons, I won't be supporting this, this evening.
Thank you, council member. Um, you know, when, when I get calls from folks, I, I connect them with services. And so hopefully, um, you have, whenever someone has contacted you because you're talking about these families, hopefully you've been able to have them reach out, at least maybe have, connect them with staff, with Sylvia, to see if we can get them on a waiting list or something for affordable housing, connect them, whatever resources, um, you know, contact staff because they can definitely help you. Um, you know, because there is a lot of help out there for them. We have food pantries, and we have a lot of things. One of the speakers was talking about, um, kids, um, not having food. There's also the free lunch program that goes on even during the summertime at our school district. And so anyway, hopefully that, you're, you're able to do that for them. You know, when I think about our city, we have 33,000 housing units. So those are apartments, um, mobile homes, um, condominiums, houses, 33,000, um, homes in our community, and about 3,300, as we talk, well, it's actually 3,308, I think, um, affordable housing units, um, that are our way of also helping people from becoming homeless. Then we have another 3,000 housing units under, well, that are somewhere in the pipeline of being constructed, which a city doesn't actually build those. 464 of those are deed restricted affordable as well. So I feel like we're doing a lot for people, um, as far as, you know, housing-wise. But when I think about human, human rights, everyone has human rights, including the folks like Cheryl Brown. And I was actually going to bring up, before she sent that message, she had told me about her son, um, and not being able to have playdates with some of his classmates. That breaks my heart. I mean, the fact that you're not able to have friends over because your classmates' parents don't feel safe with them being there, I, I find that really very sad, to be honest. Um, you know, I don't think it's a perception of people are, you know, criminalizing anyone. I think this is a legitimate concern that people need to get help, and we want to help them get help. And, you know, if they're going to say, "No, we, we'd rather live on the street, we'd rather continue, um, our behavior," because back to your point, council member, it's not about the actual person, it's about their actions and what they're doing that is unlawful activity. And it affects the other 33,000 housing units in our community, roughly 98,000 people. We have to think about every single one of them. So every single decision that we make up here, it's not like we go, "Oh, well, it's only going to affect five people, or it's going to affect 20 people," or it affects literally everyone in our community. And how does one decision affect another? I mean, it really is not easy being up here. And, you know, you have to get elected, you don't, uh, you know, you don't have, um, you know, the, we're not, we're not making a ton of money up here. And, you know, we do it because we love the community. We're up here to make decisions for the collective community, 98,000 people. So, you know, I, I receive a lot of emails, I receive a lot of tagging on social media of people so concerned about what's happening with our homeless population, of their quality of life going down, and, um, you know, seeing trash left everywhere. I mean, I, I, we're, we're in a bad position. We need to make a decision. My decision is going to be figuring out how to continue our quality of life for the most po, the most people, and getting the people that need help, help. We will still continue to do that. And, you know, I think I have the unique, um, discussion about this because I've been on here the longest, and you weren't even on here, Sharon, because Hal Martin was on the, um, it was the Homeless Task Force way back when. We, we actually spent about 50, I want to say it was $50,000 a year for numerous years. Then we bumped that up, and I think that might have been before you actually, this is your 12th year in office, right? Um, I think we bumped it up right before you actually took office, and we spent $125,000 a year. We've done that all this time, all this time. I mean, it's got to be a million dollars or more in specifically to help people that, you know, are homeless, have not, have, you know, from becoming homeless, a lot of times, like I mentioned earlier, interfaith, they help people with first month's rent, last month's rent. There is a lot of help out there. And, you know, um, I think, you know, if we, if we don't take action, I think we're letting down a lot of people. 98,000 people, you know, most of them would really support this action. For us to be able to have the, um, the help that we need to give our law enforcement to encourage people with more strength to go and get the help that they need to help get them off the street. So I will be supporting this action. Um, it's, you know, it's not easy being up here. It's easy to say, "Well, you should do this, you should do that." When you get a lot of calls, a lot of emails from lots of people in the community over and over and over, it's time to take action. We, we finally have the law behind us with the current, or the most recent court, Supreme Court, uh, ruling. Um, anyway, so my motion would be to approve the ordinance, and I'm looking for a second.
Can we move to close the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I, I moved to close the public hearing. Thank you for reminding me. Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no votes? Okay, moving forward to the action, and I would actually move to introduce the ordinance. Um, and do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes?
No.
Okay. Uh, motion passes four to one. Okay, moving on to the next, uh, item in our, did we have any new speaker? Okay. Um, Sandeg. I actually didn't bring my notes, so I'm going to make a double, um, a report next time. Uh, League of California Cities.
We are on summer break. We meet in August.
Okay. Uh, North County Transit District.
We meet next week.
Okay. Oh, and at Sandeg, we meet on Friday. Um, North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority.
Our next meeting is in August.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance.
We met, uh, the 27th of June, and we made some adjustments to our rates to make it an easier transition between the summer and the winter months, so that we don't see quite such a roller coaster with our, um, our residents, so.
Is that smoothing?
They call it smoothing, yes. So there'll, there'll be a, an increase in the winter rate, but it will, then you'll see, what you won't see is an increase in the summer rate. So trying to balance it out so that month to month, there's some predictability in what you'll be paying. And something that's not on the, the agenda, but I had a conversation with our CEO today. In 2020, I think it was '22, maybe, um, our then-CEO proposed a contract with a company called Furvo out of Utah, where they were going to produce geothermal electricity and effectively drilling holes in the ground till you hit hot pockets, dump water and other fluids down there to generate steam, turn the turbines, and create electricity. They hadn't done anything yet at that point. It was just, that was their proposal. So when the contract came up and we started analyzing it, one of the things I insisted on was that if they failed to meet expectations or provide that energy, that we would not stand any liability, we were not going to front-load any money to them. It was going to be, when you start producing, we'll start paying. And so we had a contract with them, and it was due to be, um, in place June of 2026, which we knew. And we found out today that this company has created such an interest, that Southern California Edison has signed a contract with them for 330 megawatts of energy, and it, now they're going to be dumping money into their pockets. So they've reached out to us and said, "Look, we, we are still going to produce for you, but we will be putting it off till June of '28," which initially I thought, "Well, that's kind of a hit on us." But the reality of it is that now it makes that company a lot more solvent, so that we will have a, I think, a more realistic guarantee that we will see that power come online. And we are, we're going to be one of the smaller buyers, but we will definitely have that geothermal energy coming in. So it's, it's steam power, essentially. We're going back to the 19th century to generate electricity, but it is clean, so that's where we are.
Did Vista come online yet?
Vista and Oceanside are online, and because of the way SDG&E sets up the exits, they are actually paying less than us right now. We, Escondido, San Marcos are at the highest rate, but that changes not just year to year, but within those years, based on the, the life expectancy of existing contracts, and when those contracts terminate or are sold. But, um, as an example, when we came onboard, Solana Beach was at the very lowest rate, they were the, the initial. They are now up, uh, probably mid-range because of the contracts that they had existing that have come to maturity now. So it will, it will adjust periodically, but eventually they'll all come to termination, and then it'll just be the contracts we've let, which are considered to be lower than what SDG&E was paying, because they're a for-profit and we're not.
Okay. Um, council business visits.
Okay. Since I've cleared my throat, I can start.
Okay.
Uh, council, council member Sunell and I went down for an encore visit at Gilco, which is at 1701 La Costa Meadows Drive, down in our, um, our Southern Business Park area. And this was, uh, the visit was about a year ago, we were down there, and it was a family-run business. We knew, we talked to the owner, and he was in the process of, uh, looking for somewhere to retire and sell the business. Essentially, what they do is they act as an intermediary and provide shelf extenders, sugars, some natural and some artificial, non-sugar sweeteners, cocoa powder. And when we were there a year ago, they had a, in their warehouse, pallets loaded with cocoa powder and sugar products that were going to go out. So you won't find them listed anywhere on, on products, but you will find all of their ingredients on almost everything you might find in a grocery store. And we talked to Tara Dekovich, who's the marketing manager, food and nutrition for the US and the Americas, and she said it's kind of a, I don't want to call it a game, but I'll just say it's a game, where they go up to the grocery store and do their shopping. They can look at a product and know, based on the ingredients in there, that they had a hand in it. And so most of their products, you're going to find it, uh, the Trader Joe's, sprouts, uh, the non-GMO products.
Wait, did they, sorry, I have a question. Did they know because they just know the companies that buy their product?
They, they, they know the company, so, and then I'll shut up.
Yeah, sorry.
So what you have, um, large, large companies, big companies like Cargill is a great example, and they use them as an example. So Cargill will provide base products for, let's say you want to start a mom-and-pop operation, baking muffins and, but you need certain, um, products to go with that.
Yeah.
Well, Cargill's not going to contract with Ed Musgrove for, you know, five dozen muffins a month, but this company has multiple contracts. So then they will act as an intermediary with that provider to ensure that the smaller businesses have a steady range of products, so they have pre-positioned warehouses around the country, and then they are able to meet the needs of those smaller businesses.
So they're a middleman?
They are a middleman. They don't, they do have a lab there, and they do have scientists that help develop products. If, if you, if you have what you think you need, but it needs a tweak here and there, they have scientists in-house that will make those adjustments to make your product a little...
Like flavors?
Um, some flavors, some, um, I mean, we don't want to talk about emulsifiers, but sometimes that's what it is.
It's very interesting.
Thickening agents, thinning agents.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh, it's almost there, can you tweak this? And so their scientists will work with you.
Very cool.
And, and Ed covered the, kind of the, what they, what they provide pretty well. This is a photo, that's Tara, um, standing in, um, the middle of us. What also is cool, that not only is she involved with this business in San Marcos, but her and her family live in Discovery Hills over by, uh, Discovery Lake, and they, they had a lot of praise of the neighborhood and the city, and, uh, they're really excited about what's going on with North City, and they just love living here in San Marcos. So it's always nice to meet folks who both live and work in, in San Marcos. Um, the, uh, Gilco was, they did go through an acquisition, um, fairly recently with a company called Dezealous, um, but for now, they're keeping all of their, their branding and everything staying the same there. Uh, they have over a thousand, uh, customers, and as I'd mentioned, they, they deal mostly B-to-B, business-to-business, um, interactions. And they have 35 full-time employees, including, uh, 10 sales reps that are divided up across the entire country and different territories. And, um, they've recently went through a remodel of their, their location here, and they do have some, um, some plans and some need to expand. However, I think with the acquisition and stuff, I think the leadership of, uh, of the new, new firm is kind of taking it a little bit slower than they had originally anticipated. Um, and the other thing, uh, we, while we were there, um, their president, actually Shelley Beck, who lives in North County as well, not San Marcos, but North County, um, she stopped by and, and chatted with us for a little while, and she was quite impressive as well. And she's, um, currently being considered for San Diego's, uh, Business Journal's 40 Under 40. Um, so that was pretty cool. And, uh, yeah, they're just, uh...
The best. Qualified. I was like, oh, shoot.
She came...
Did they have a 60 over 60?
I'm with you, Sharon.
Fifty over 50.
She walked into the room, and it was like, you know, 20 gigawatts came in.
Good for her. That's awesome.
She's just a bundle of energy, so positive in what she was doing, and could not, uh, could not be nicer and more informative and just...
And Gilco, yes, Gilco is just another, you know, fascinating business that, every time we do these, I'm, I'm just blown away with, um, the different, um, types of businesses that we have in San Marcos. I think we all get kind of single-track minded on, like, restaurants and, you know, places of, like, recreation, but there's so many unique businesses taking place in our, in our community. It's pretty cool.
There are, definitely. Okay, um, council commentary. Just wanted to say a quick, uh, shout-out to our staff for a fabulous job on 4th of July. Um, I was thinking to myself, wow, these are next-level fireworks, they're amazing. Never paid for a pie taxpayer dollars, all 100% donation or sponsorships, um, was really very happy, and everyone seemed to love the band. The band was great. Um, it was a, it was a very fun night. I think the community really enjoyed it. Yes?
I've heard them before.
You have?
But the Mission Hills High School Choir?
Oh, yeah.
Phenomenal.
They, they really did a great job. Yeah, they actually, um, yeah, they actually did a little start to kick off the, um, oh, I'm sorry, the Creek District project. I'm so excited that, about the 4th of July. I totally forgot about that. What's new?
Well, very little is new. We're just continuing to put the final finishing touches on, so I, I, I think that there's not going to be too much information as we do the updates. We're just waiting for that plant material to take and, uh, schedule the, the grand opening.
I was going to say, I haven't seen any, um, any potential dates yet.
Yes, not yet. We, we want to make sure we stick the landing on this one, so we're, we're giving that plant material some, some chance to get going, so that when we cut the ribbon, it's all, it's all finished and looks good.
All right. And to anyone out there that sees graffiti on the, um, on that part, on, at that park, we do have our city app, Report a Concern, um, and then you can also find it on the website if you don't have a smartphone. Uh, you can also go to, just type in "Report a Concern" from our website in the search engine, and then you can, uh, report any concern, and it will email you back and let you know where it is and the status, and then when it's cleared and finished, it will also let you know that too, so you are, are aware that it's all been handled. So anyway, um, thank you, and everyone have a great night. Oh, this meeting's adjourned. I forgot to do that. So tired.